Listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic devices or please put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacey, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Meyer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Before we move on, I would like to note that Agenda Item 7.1, Recognition of Marion County Spelling Bee Winners, and Agenda Item 7.2, Recognition of Math Counts Winners, will be moved up to under 5.2, which is the recognition of our Very Special Arts, so that all of our recognition and our families can leave. So, Dr. Meyer? You're welcome to stay. However, with little ones, and we do have school tomorrow, so chances are you would want to leave. Dr. Meyer, would you like to provide introductory remarks regarding our inspiration and pledge this evening?
Yes, please. Mr. Christian, if you get that ready, and Ms. Beasley, will you bring your teacher and your student up? We often think of poetry as something esoteric and something that is not for us, but before we have this wonderful student lead us in the pledge and the inspiration, I thought nobody better than one of our favorite teachers of all times, Mr. Keating, could explain it about poetry to us.
Anybody tells you words and ideas can change the world. Now, see that look in Mr. Pitt's eye? Like 19th century literature has nothing to do with going to business school or medical school, right? Maybe. Mr. Hopkins, you may agree with them thinking, yes, we should simply study our Mr. Pritchard and learn our rhyme and meter and go quietly about the business of achieving other ambitions. A little secret for you. Huddle up. Huddle up! We don't read and write poetry because it's cute. We read and write poetry because we are members of the human race, and the human race is filled with passion. Medicine, law, business, engineering, these are noble pursuits and necessary to sustain life. But poetry, beauty, romance, love, these are what we stay alive for. To quote from Whitman, "Oh me, oh life, of the questions of these recurring, of the endless trains of the faithless, of cities filled with the foolish, what good amid these? Oh me, oh life." Answer that you are here, that life exists and identity, that the powerful play goes on and you may contribute a verse. That the powerful play goes on and you may contribute a verse. What will your verse be?
So, Ms. Beasley, the principal of Lake Weir High School, in celebration of Poetry Month, will introduce a student who will share her verse and what she's found in her studies.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer, for inviting us tonight. We're very honored to be here. I'm very proud of the student that's standing behind me and her teacher, Mr. Gibbs. This is Ashton Loper, who is a 10th grader at Lake Weir High School. This is the second year that she placed in the top 10 in the Poetry Allowed Competition in the state of Florida, which is pretty impressive for a 10th grader, in my opinion. And I think you're going to be very impressed as well when you see how awesome she is. So, without further ado, Ashton.
Thank you. Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for having me. It's absolutely an honor. I'm very glad to be here. I'm Ashton Loper. I'm a pre-IB student at Lake Weir High School. I recently came back from state finals for Poetry Out Loud, a competition which requires students to memorize and recite poems. Students are scored on memorization, body presence, and understanding. For two years in a row, I've placed in the top 10 at state competition. I couldn't have been even able to achieve such proficiency if it wasn't for my dedicated teachers, Mr. John Gibbs, Mr. Ryan Cahill, and Ms. Kathleen Williams, and their constant encouragement, expert mentoring, and coaching. They made way in their busy schedules to spend unpaid hours with me after school and make sure my poems were flawless. In the classroom, I was given ample opportunities to not only write my own poetry, but also recite in front of the class. It helped shape and further improve my confidence in public speaking and made me feel more prepared for not only the rest of my school career, but life as a whole. They've all helped me see more of an importance in poetry in the ways it can beautifully express the feelings in the world, society, or just one person. Art programs are so crucial to our county and help us understand each other in ways that are indescribable in any other field. Poetry helps us understand society better in the past and the now, encapsulating profound meaning, whether it be in short, powerful poems, or long narrative ones. At a more personal level, poetry allows an outlet for people to process their own emotions that would have otherwise been left bottled up if it wasn't for such a creative art form. One of the things that have always attracted me when it came to poetry is the way harmony, social justice, and all of these other things just come together and make it so we can all feel together and just be one. It all blends to a beautiful symphony that can be mutually felt by anyone. It serves as a viable form of communication for people, which is so crucial in these times of such confusion and anger. Feelings of pain, happiness, solidarity, that can only be expressed through poetry. To the people right now in Washington expressing their grievances through poetry relatable to millions, or to the child writing their own masterpiece of poetry in their bedroom, finally being able to express themselves, I stand with you. The dreamers and the revolutionaries through the arts that will one day change the world. With that being said, I'm very eager to share with you two of the three poems I recited at the 2018 Florida State Poetry Out Loud Competition.
She's up to the side.
We won't pick her up on the microphone if she does not.
Okay. "Bleeding Heart" by Carmen Jaime N. Smith. My heart is bleeding. It bleeds upward and fills my mouth up with salt. It bleeds because of a city in ruins, the chair still warm from sister's body, because it will all be irreproducible. My heart bleeds because of baby bear not finding mull bear, and it bleeds to the tips of my fingers like I painted my nose crimson. Sometimes my heart bleeds so much I am a raisin. It bleeds until I am a quivering ragged clot, bleeds at the ending with the heroine and her sunken cancer eyes, at the ending with a plane to fluke over smoke-choked killing fields. I'm bleeding a river of blood right now, and it's wearing a culvert made for the blood. My heart rises up in me, becomes the cork of me, and I choke on it. I'm bleeding for you and for me and for the tiny babies and the IED plumb leg. It bleeds because I'm made that way, all filled up with blood. My sloppy heart, a sponge filled with blood to squeeze onto any circumstance. Because it is mine, it will always bleed. My heart bled today. It bled onto the streets and the steps of City Hall. It bled in the pizza parlor with the useless jukebox. I've got so much blood to give inside and outside of any balloon. Even for a bad zoning decision, I'll bleed so much you'll be bleeding, all of us bleeding in and out like it's breathing or kissing, and because it is righteous and terrible and red. Now, I will recite my second poem that I also did at competition. "Megan Married Herself" by Caroline Bird. She arrived at the country mansion in a silver limousine. She'd sent out invitations and everything, her name written twice with "and" in the middle, the calligraphy of coupling. She strode down the aisle to "At Last" by Etta James, faced the celebrant like a keen soldier recording for me, her voice shaky yet sure. "I do, I do. You may now kiss the mirror." Applause, confetti. Every single one of the 140 guests deemed the service unimpletable, especially the vows, sewn from the heart. Her wedding gown was ivory, pointedly off-white. "After all, we've shared a bed for 32 years," she quipped in her first speech. "I'm hardly virginal, if you know what I mean." No one knew exactly what she meant, but not a soul questioned their devotion. You only had to look at them, hand cupped in hand, smiling out of the same eyes. You could sense their secret language, bone deep, bloody blood. Hosts were frequent, tearful. One guest died his wife, hovering harmlessly at the bar. And imagine what his life might have been if he responded years ago to that offer and said, "I'm the only one who will ever truly understand you. Marry me, Derek. I love you. Marry me." At the time, he hadn't taken this proposal seriously. He recharged his champagne flute, watched the newlywed cut her five-tiered cake, both hands on the knife. "Is it too late for us to try?" Derek whispered to no one, as the bride glided herself onto the dance floor, taking turns first to leave, then follow. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ashton, very much. Congratulations, and we're hoping that next year, you're in the top 10 or higher.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the March 27, 2018 School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet, those materials distributed to Board Members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation.
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign.
I'm doing wrong here. Did I not join? Did I not do something? What? Mine looks different.
Yeah. Go ahead and tell her your vote, and we'll go out and go back in.
Did you get mine instead of your?
The vote passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 29, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
No. No board dogs. Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 13, 2018 School Board Meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, say aye, and opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 15, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please say aye, and opposed, like sign. Thank you. Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, CFO, Business Services, and Ms. Kristin Corrigan, Internal Auditor, please come forward and introduce the individuals to be recognized for excellence in bookkeeping.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, Mrs. Flotketter, and Mrs. Lopez, thank you very much for this opportunity. We're always excited to provide to you some recognition for those that take their job very, very seriously as it relates to the audits. I'm going to allow Kristin Corrigan to come on up and tell you a little bit more about our recognition for tonight.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayor and Board Members. This department achieved what we call a perfect audit, and we'll go over it again as usual. The perfect audit consists of having no findings for the school year, which means that they met all of our Red Book requirements, Florida statutes, and school board policies. The certificate they are receiving tonight says, "Award of Bookkeeping Excellence Presented in recognition of achieving an audit with no findings for the 2015-2016 school year." It is signed by Dr. Meyer and our CFO, Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis. I would like to call up the past Director of our Extended Day Program during the 15-16 school year, Mr. Mark Fianello; the current Program Manager for Extended Day, Pam Eubanks; and our Bookkeeper, Ms. Sarah Workman. I cannot begin to express to you my gratitude for the team that we have at Extended Day, for a team of only a few people that review over 6,700 money's collected forms that are received at our locations. They review hundreds of thousands of transactions every year for accuracy. They have an incredible system set up that keeps fraud from occurring and ensures accuracy for our district. Sarah, our Bookkeeper, works with over $7 million in transactions every year and has been here with us for a number of years now. She plays a vital role for this department, and it shows in her audits. So, thank you, Sarah, for doing a great job. And Ms. Pam will speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Meyer, it's a privilege to be here with Sarah this evening. We often joke in our office that she's our go-to girl for money. We don't make any decisions unless we go to Sarah, but she does an amazing job. And Christine gave you a little snapshot of what she does, but she also, in addition to doing internal accounts, she does our district budget as well and oversees all of that. So, she's pretty amazing, and I have an amazing team behind her, but she helps lead that, and it's a privilege to be here with you this evening. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity tonight to recognize them for their great work that they do for our district. Thank you.
Ms. Jo Crowder, is she out in the lobby? Ms. Crowder is our Fine Arts Program Specialist, and she would like to recognize the Very Specials Arts Organization.
Good evening, Chairman McCall, School Board Members, Superintendent Mayor, and guests. The mission of VSA Florida, formerly known as Very Special Arts, is to provide support and champion arts education and cultural experiences for and by people with disabilities. Their vision is to create a world in which the arts are universally accessible to all. We have two artists with us this evening. They spent multiple weeks in classrooms at the Pace Center for Girls, the Marion Regional Juvenile Detention Center, Marion Oaks Elementary, and Hillcrest School, where they inspired students, formed relationships, and worked on projects that were displayed in an exhibit at the Appleton Museum entitled "My Art, My Way." The standards-based art lessons not only benefited the students emotionally, but also had the effect of improved academic performance and improved positive behaviors. Tonight, we have several people here in support of the outstanding work our VSA artists accomplish with our students. From Hillcrest School, Principal Lori Manresa, Teacher Anita Hendry, and special needs paraprofessional Jessica Walker; from Marion Oaks Elementary, Shay Gwynn, Principal; APs Rebecca Miller and Dr. Anna Streeter-McAllister; and ESC teacher Kelly Ryan; representing the Pace Center and the Marion Regional Juvenile Detention Center, Dr. Dama Absher, Director of Alternative Learning; and we also have Elizabeth Fields, Director of Exceptional Student And from the VSA, we have local artists Maggie Weekly and Marlene Jacobowitz. And to speak to you now is the VSA Regional Program Coordinator, Pat York.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us here to showcase all the wonderful things that we do here in Marion County. VSA Florida is the state organization for arts and disabilities, and we have been providing artist and residency programs here in Marion County for the last nine years. We are proud to announce the partnership that we have with the Marion County Public Schools, the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice, and the Appleton Museum of Art. VSA Florida, a not-for-profit organization, coordinates a statewide "My Art, My Way" artist and residency program for students with and without disabilities in the public schools. Outcomes for the residencies include increasing students' art skills through sequential learning, creative thinking skills, problem-solving strategies, and the ability to use their self-expressed art for career opportunities. Teaching artist Marlene Jacobowitz -- Marlene, step forward so they know who you are -- and Maggie Weekly worked eight or 10 one-hour sessions with four schools and the Department of Juvenile Justice classrooms. The residencies included classes from Hillcrest School, Marion Oaks Elementary, Pace Center for Girls, and the Marion Juvenile Detention Center. The residency in Marion County was a very unique opportunity to extend the traditional "My Art, My Way" program. On February 17, from 10 to noon, a reception was held at the Appleton Museum of Art to showcase the artwork created in these residencies. The reception is always free to the public. You're invited every year, and you also get the opportunity to visit all of the other exhibitions at the Appleton. And it continued through March 4. VSA Florida provides, supports, and champions arts education and cultural experiences for and by people with disabilities. We conduct art education programs in schools. For the public schools, it's free. We do workshops for the Department of Juvenile Justice. We provide community art classes. We promote accomplishments of artists with disabilities through our Artist Registry Exhibitions and Performances, and we try to increase access to the arts through professional development workshops. Our webinars online are also free to anyone who registers. VSA Florida is headquartered at the College of Education at the University of South Florida, and we are always looking for part-time teaching artists, so if anybody's interested, please get in touch with me. Thanks again, and we appreciate the time to let everybody know about our programs.
Thank you, Mrs. York. Thank you, ladies. Ms. Manresa, did you bring the unicorn picture? You know that was my favorite.
Yes, I love that.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold that one. That's nice. 3D. Nice. Very nice. Thank you. Wow. It's a good problem to have.
Don't it spelling bee, right? Spelling bee is next.
Mr. Lopez. I thought you moved it.
We were going to move down to seven.
Okay. There's no user.
7.1.
Mr. Mark Ingram, ELA World Language, 612 Program Specialist, would like to recognize Marion County Spelling Bee winners.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Meyer. I'm Mark Ingram, Program Specialist for Secondary English and World Languages, and under the leadership of Superintendent Mayor, Secondary Curriculum and Instruction organized the annual Marion County Spelling Bee at MTI on February 15, 2018. Students who qualified for the county spelling bee were first selected via class spelling bees or vocab quizzes for their school-wide bees. Two winners from each school represented their schools at the Marion County Spelling Bee. For the privilege to represent Marion County at the regional spelling bee in Orlando, the bee was sponsored by the GFWC Women's Club of Ocala and hosted by their president, Mrs. Sonia Palmer. The Women's Club of Ocala also provided the judges, including Spelling Bee Chair Diane Schreier and Head Judge Carol Cameron, who is also a teacher at Saddlewood Elementary. Dr. Meyer was in attendance to greet the crowd and present the medals to the winners, and Dr. Marilyn Underwood served as the word caller and moderator. Also in attendance were the 10 school bee coordinators, as well as principals and assistant principals from each school. Lasting just over two hours and 15 rounds, the bee featured 22 students spelling nearly 100 words. First, we would like to recognize the school bee winners who are not in attendance. For Bellevue Middle, Mariah Bermudez and Jade Dunn; for Denellen Middle, Chitra Kalikwa and Boris McNair; for Fort King Middle, Aiden Robold and Amelia Staffa; for Fort McCoy School, Brantley Wiggington and Kylene Phelps; for Horizon Academy, Gillian Rotax and Joshua Ojeda; for Howard Middle, Horacio Vega and Michael Laubas; for Lake Weir Middle, Joshua Persons and Amber Duham; for Liberty Middle, Brooklyn Gluharif, Blaine Ceballos, and For Liberty Middle, Brooklyn Gluharif, Blaine Sabalos, and Francis Baltadano. For North Marion Middle, Royce Moreno and Victor Moreno, they're brothers. For Osceola Middle, Emma Joyner. And from Blessed Trinity, Caleb Lombardo. Now, we'd like to recognize the Marion County Spelling Bee winners in attendance tonight. The runner-up from Osceola Middle School, who fought for five rounds in a one-on-one epic battle with Mathias Amri Amar. And the winner for the third consecutive year of the Marion County Spelling Bee, from Blessed Trinity Catholic School, and speller of the winning word Kanji, don't ask me what that is, Mathias Tanankinsen. Thank you for your recognition.
Okay. Y'all want to come forward just a little bit so we can congratulate you? We just want to say congratulations, and hopefully we'll see you back again. Thank you for coming. Anybody else?
I'd like to say, it's amazing. You know, when so many, there's so many great kids. You know, we hear about the ones that get on TV and they get in trouble and stuff, and y'all are quietly, like the turtle in the hair, you're quietly the turtle, just rocking along, doing exactly what you're supposed to do and making your parents proud. Thank you. And thank you for making us proud.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say that anytime I see young people that really can spell, it's always a -- I will say again, congratulations, because that was my worst enemy. And I know that your parents are proud of you and this community is proud of you as well. So, congratulations guys. Job well done.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you. Ms. Carrie Renfro, Middle School Coordinator, is here to recognize Math Counts winners.
Good evening Chairman McCall, School Board Members, Dr. Mayor. Thank you for having us this evening to recognize some amazing students. On Saturday, February 10th, dozens of middle school students from Marion County converged at Maplewood Elementary to participate in the nationwide Math Counts competition. The Forest Chapter of the Florida Engineering Society sponsors Math Counts, and the Tillman and Associates Engineering do an amazing job of coordinating this all-day event. The object of this competition is to solve math equations and word problems quickly and accurately. The Math Counts competition rounds are consists of five timed rounds. There's an individual student sprint round without calculators, the individual student target round with calculators, the team round, the fast-paced oral competition called the cipher match, and the countdown round, which ranks the top 10 finalists in the oral competition. Teams from Donellen, Fort King, Howard, Liberty, Lake Weir, North Marion, Osceola Middle Schools, Fort McCoy, and Horizon Academy Combination Schools, and Blessed Trinity participated in this year's event. The top 10 individuals, the top cipher team, and the top two overall teams each received awards at the event. The top two teams moved on to represent Marion County at the state competition held in Daytona on March 23rd. It's time to meet these amazing students and their coaches. The top 10 individual students are: In 10th place Tristan Pink from Osceola Middle School, who is unable to be here this evening because he's competing at the State Science and Engineering Fair. In 9th place Ragav Nander from Howard Middle School. In 8th place Vivek Sandropati from Howard Middle School, who's also unable to be here this evening because he's competing in the State Science and Engineering Fair. In 7th place Emily Sharouse from North Marion Middle School. In 6th place Sarah McGinley from Osceola Middle School. In 5th place Austin Rogers from North Marion Middle School, who represented Marion County and the Forest Chapter as a competing individual at the state Math Counts competition and ranked 116th out of 212 at the state level. In 4th place Gia Perez Sanchez from North Marion Middle School, who represented Marion County and the Forest Chapter as a competing individual at the state Math Counts competition and ranked 111 out of 212 at state. In 3rd place Lillian Smith from Howard Middle School. In 2nd place Ruchi Patel from Howard Middle School. And our 1st place winner is Anish Goganini from Howard Middle School. This year's top cipher team for Marion County is from North Marion Middle School. The team members are Austin Rogers, Gia Perez Sanchez, Emily Sharouse, and Ezekiel Medrano. This team is coached by Dr. William Lockley and Dr. -- and Mr. Keith Melanson. The 2nd place team for Marion County is from Osceola Middle School. The team members are Sarah McGinley, Tristan Pink, Alex Dorsey, and Faith Broverzma. This team placed 29th in the state competition and is coached by Ms. Stacy Buckhalter. And our 1st place team is from Howard Middle School, and it consisted of Anish Goganini, Ruchi Patel, Lillian Smith, Vivek Sandropati, and Ragav Nander, with Pamela Ernest as their coach. This team placed 15th in the state competition, which is in the top 25% of the state. Thank you students and their families for your dedication and your accomplishments.
We're going to hold you for pictures and then I'm going to turn you around, okay? So look out so Mom and Dad can get pictures. Okay. Can you -- oh, wait, 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 look at Mr. Christian. Okay, you guys turn around. Wow. I mean, that is just amazing. Mr. James said that spelling was his nemesis in school. Math was definitely mine, so congratulations to all of you. Ms. King?
Yeah, I'm just going to say congratulations. You guys are brilliant. And it's just wonderful seeing boys and girls up here alike, because lots of times those girls are outnumbered, so I love seeing that. So, congratulations and keep up the great work.
I am so proud of you. I certainly would not have been standing there at your age, that's for sure.
I never would have been.
But I loved the teacher and I got to hug her. So proud of you and so proud of people who can just reach down and pull this kind of knowledge out. It's just amazing. And congratulations and just stay like you are. Don't change. Don't let anybody ever change you. Stay like you are.
Mr. James?
I just want y'all to know, you gotta keep your eye on the ball. And when I say keep your eye on the ball, because you're going from here to high school and beyond. And don't lose your focus on what you're doing, because there's really some great things that is occurring with you now. But if you lose your focus, there will be a lot out there. So remember this day, and then you gotta do it again. Congratulations, guys.
You know I'm very proud of you already, so when I came out already, I was very, very proud of you all, so they said everything and more, but get it.
Dr. Mayor? We are just so proud of you. We are proud that you are discovering your gifts and you're sharing them with the world. That's huge. To your teachers, thank you. Thank you for helping these young people find their gifts. And for the parents, are you out there? I don't think we heard you. Okay. Thank you, because it's because of you and your support that these great things happen, so we thank you. Thank you, kids. Keep going. Happy great evening. Oh, and Mr. Hensel would be upset with me if I didn't share an email he sent me earlier where he said Howard Middle School's Math Counts team took 15th place this past Friday at state. This was out of 45 teams. And my coach, Mrs. Ernst, said this was the highest they have ever placed at state, and he was very proud, wanted me to share. Thank you, kids, so much.
Bye-bye. You're like a precious.
Bye, Ms. Pam.
Our kids grew up together.
Are you two lifelong friends?
That's happy.
Because the kids were little, our kids grew up together. Yeah. She was, she's got.
That competition was awesome. It was just awesome. The whole cafeteria was filled with them.
Most of the time, it was very hard financially.
Bye-bye. We'll see you soon here. You'll be back for awards, I know. Okay.
They struggled, but when the time came, she came back. You know, she's a math teacher and she came back.
Great one. Great person, too.
Mr. Juan Lopez, Director of Psychological and Social Work Services, please come forward for your presentation on the support visit to Parkland, Florida by your team, and thank you for doing.
Evening, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Superintendent, members of the board. I would like to begin this evening with a message from Broward County Public Schools to you, our leaders. It reads, "On behalf of Broward County Public Schools and the Exceptional Student Learning Support Division, thank you for rearranging your lives and schedules to assist our community during this time. Words cannot express how truly grateful we are for you and your organization's compassion and generosity. Sincerely, Antonin Hickman, Executive Director of Exceptional Student Learning Support." Now, on behalf of our crisis response team, I would like to thank our superintendent, because without her leadership and compassion, we would not have had the opportunity to convert the grief and outrage of our community in the face of this tragedy into an act of meaningful care and compassion. Thank you again. Now, I will introduce the members of the crisis response team, which responded to Broward County, and the coordinators of our district crisis response team. Melissa McCain, School Psychology, is our coordinator. Patty Dawkins, unfortunately Patty was not here, she arranged for the entire mobilization of our team, but for personal reasons, she is not able to be here today. Sunny Biggers, School Psychologist, she's one of our team members. Anushka Joseph, School Psychologist, also one of the responding team. Lisa Stringfeld, School Psychologist. And Elizabeth Campuri. Elizabeth is actually presenting to take stock in children at this point, and we are really kind of invested in trying to make students part of a solution that will help prevent some of these tragedies. And we are kind of giving them a training so they can identify some of the warning signs and be able to provide leadership at their schools. Now, Ms. McCain and Ms. Biggers will share their experiences and will briefly highlight our local effort.
Good evening. My name is Sunny Biggers, and I'd like to share with you some of what we gained from being part of the crisis response in Parkland. We were involved in direct service to the student body, and we witnessed the needs of the students, staff, and community firsthand. While we hope we never have to face such a traumatic event here in Marion County, we know that in the event of a major crisis, we would need support from other districts just as our friends in Broward needed us. One lesson we learned from Broward County was the importance of flexibility in crisis response. We know that the way people respond to traumatic experiences can greatly vary. In Parkland, it was important to continually adapt our level of support. Resources like counselors, extra teachers, and therapy dogs were able to be utilized in varying ways each day and even each hour based on student and staff needs. As an example, many of our team members were utilized to support whole classrooms at Stone Land Douglas High School in the morning on the student's first day back at school. But as those classrooms began to stabilize and the teachers felt more comfortable throughout the day, we were moved to working with individual students who needed one-on-one support either in small groups or individually. The flexibility of the team in Broward allowed them to use these resources as effectively as possible, and we were all honored to be able to be a part of it.
Good evening. My name is Melissa McCain, and I'd like to share with you a little bit about our local district crisis team, as well as how we're using some information that we learned in Parkland to improve our team. First of all, Ms. Hensel is passing out some information about the activity of our district crisis team so far this school year. So, our district team in Marion County is made up of school social workers and school psychologists who support the students in Marion County. Our team has responded to 15 crisis events so far this school year at 12 different schools. And unfortunately, as you can see, our schools have experienced significant loss this year. In fact, some of our schools have experienced multiple losses, which creates even more trauma for our students and staff. One of the things that we saw firsthand in Parkland was the importance of training and preparedness. Because every crisis is a little bit different, there's really no way that we can anticipate every need, but it's critical for each school to have a plan and for each member of the team to really know what their role would be in the event of a crisis. It's typical for our school administration teams to change a bit each year, and that's one of the reasons why it's important to stay current with crisis training. Patty Dawkins and I lead our district crisis team, and we've provided training for several schools this year at their request. The feedback has been very positive, and all of the school teams have said that while they hope that they never have to face a major crisis at their school, they do appreciate the fact that they can feel prepared for what they should expect and how they can best support their students. I'd like to say in closing that my colleagues and I just considered it a privilege to be able to go to Parkland, to be a small part of the healing process for them, so we'd just like to thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. If you have any questions, we will be available to answer any of them, so.
Anybody?
No.
I just want to say, thank you for taking your time. I know it was a difficult situation, but thank you for your courage in going down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you for taking care of us, because I know your team is amazing.
I always say it's a privilege to be allowed to be supportive to people when they are in the middle of crisis. It's a real privilege to be part of that process, so we feel honored to be given the opportunity to provide and to play that role. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
Dr. Mayor, you have a turnaround school update for us, I believe Dr. Grantham and Ms. Beck.
Yes, so Dr. Grantham and Ms. Beck will make their way in. And Board Members, you have a binder that was left at your place, and that will be what Ms. Beck is going to orientate you to.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, and Board Members. It's my pleasure this evening to provide to you a copy of the MCPS School Quick Fact Data Sheets for third quarter. The creation of our new School Quick Fact Sheets was a multi-department project. These departments assisted in not only the layout and design, but also helped provide much of the data that you will see included on the document. We created a committee, and first and foremost and primarily, the goal of our committee was to create a one-page, front-to-back document that provided school-specific data in a very friendly format. We believe that we have been able to achieve that goal, and I definitely would like to take a moment to thank the following departments for their hard work and their input, and I have many of them lined up here behind me. So, we had Ms. Dama Absher from Alternative Learning Department, Suzanne McGuire from Family School and Community Engagement, Philip Leppert from Employment Services, Kira Shafte from the Teaching and Learning Department, John McGowan, Chris Lyon, and Chris Sandy from Counseling and Assessment, Holly Gerlach from Elementary Education, and Kendra Hamby from Turnaround Schools. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank our school principals, who personalize their School Quick Fact Sheets by providing the narrative on the documents. This is a multi-phase project, and so this evening, the data that we are presenting to you is connected to our elementary schools. At this meeting, I'm going to spend a little bit of time reviewing what you will find on your document, and then in subsequent meetings, we're going to delve into district data trends, as well as discuss that data connected to turnaround on your document, and then in subsequent meetings, we're going to delve into district data trends, as well as discuss that data connected to turnaround schools. If you will look in the left pocket of your binder, you will find an outline that includes future board meeting dates, topics, data topics that we would like to cover, and who will be responsible for presenting those topics to you. In the center of your binder, you will find all of your elementary schools. And if you don't mind turning three pages, tonight, we're going to talk specifically about Bellevue Elementary, excuse me, Bellevue-Santos Elementary. If you look for Bellevue-Santos Elementary, the first page is divided into four sections. The first section, we have broken down by school enrollment and attendance data. We would like to submit this data or provide this data to you on a quarterly basis, and because we are just ending our third quarter, we have provided third-quarter data. For attendance or enrollment, excuse me, we have used the 120-day count, and we have been consistent across all of our elementary schools. To the right of that area, you will see the school monthly average attendance rates, and we have included that data all the way from the beginning of the year till the end of February. When we provide this data to you again at the end of the fourth quarter, your chart will be complete with attendance data from August all the way until May. The second section that we have included on our quick fact sheet is student discipline data. What you are looking at is 16, 17 end-of-the-year data for each specific school. That has been indicated by Level 1, 2, 3, or 4, which is how discipline incident codes are coded into the system. And we have included 17, 18 year-to-date. We have included that by Levels 1, 2, 3, and 4, including totals. If you notice, we've also created a rationale box. That was an opportunity for our principals to share not only with you as board members, but with their school community if they have increases or decreases in their discipline data, to take the opportunity to share. As I reference Bellevue-Santos in my example this evening, you will see that the principal, Mr. Green, has indicated that for the 16, 17 school year, his discipline averaged 166.25 per quarter. His current average per quarter is 116.33, which would be a reduction of 30%. He attributes that to the implementation of the 10 critical elements for discipline, and I know that in speaking with him, his school is working very hard, both schoolwide and in the classroom, on making improvements or continued improvements to discipline. The third section of our quick fact sheet includes what we are labeling as Family, School, and Community Engagement data. What you will see is the number of volunteer hours to date. You will also see the number of volunteers, so that's physical people. And then what we have asked our principals to do is to capture for you the family and community activities that have occurred at their school, and in some cases, off of their school site, but definitely it was their children and their families for this third quarter. So, it does not represent year-to-date. It truly only represents third quarter, and that you can expect that when you see this document again for fourth quarter, you will see what activities that they are reaching out to their families and students for our final quarter of the year. We also have included the number in attendance. I recall that you asked how many parents or families were attending those events. The other thing that we have indicated is that some of these events occurred off-campus, and so you will see an asterisk by those events. You will also notice, as when you have time and you flip from page to page, that some activities remain very constant from school to school, such as SAC meetings, PTO meetings, award ceremonies. But then there are other activities that are very specific to the school, to the school community, and to the needs of the school. The final section on our first page is teacher data. The information that we have included on this document includes the total teaching units, that is, teachers that are sitting in front of students. We also have included the number of teachers with 10 or more years of teaching experience. We have also included the number of teacher vacancies at each school and the number of permanent substitutes. It was important to create a box entitled Teacher Vacancies so that we could, or the principals, excuse me, could articulate what openings do they still have remaining at their school, if any. And if there was a discrepancy in the number between vacancies and subs, in some cases, the position was not filled at this time. As you will see reflected on Mr. Green's sheet, he has a support facilitator position that is not filled at this time. If you don't mind flipping to the next page of Bellevue-Santos, on the back, what you will see is two big sections. The first section is the student achievement data. We talked long and hard about what data we were going to present and what it was that as board members you were really looking for, and what we settled in on is I-ready data. It is data that is consistent among all of our elementary schools. What you will see is data for reading and for math. You will also see what we call in the system AP2, which AP2 simply means Assessment Period 1 and Assessment Period 2. That was January and September, and you will be able to see comparison data. The data is color-coded by green, yellow, and red, and I want to spend a couple of minutes talking to you about what that data is really saying to you. It's important to note that this data is pulled by end of the year, and we did that by design, because that is how we share the data back with our school administrators, and that is how we share the data back to our teachers. And so, again, keeping that in mind, it's at an end-of-the-year view. So, there are fewer greens, more yellows, and probably a few more reds than if we were to look at that in a different view. So, what do the green, yellows, and reds mean? If a student is in green, they are considered on or above level. But what that truly means is that because we are halfway through the year, they have to be performing at the mid-to-late of their current grade level or exceeding their grade level to even be in the green. So, I'll use an example. If you have a second-grade student that is performing at the second-grade level, but he or she is performing early on in the grade level, they would not be in the green. Instead, they would be captured in the yellow. The yellow, or our Tier 2 students, are students that are performing early in the grade, because remember, we're no longer at the beginning of the school year. We are halfway through the year. So, they are performing either early in the grade level up to one year behind the grade level. And then those students in red are students that are performing two or more levels below their current grade level. So, both groups of students, our administrators and our teachers, would really focus in on for two, to me, very different reasons. Our students in red are significantly behind, so we have to close the gap, and we need to do it as quickly as possible. Our students in yellow are deficient, but not that far behind, and so we attack them a little bit differently because it doesn't take as much to close that gap. Finally, what you will see is a principal comment section. What we have asked our principals to outline is their strength areas, their opportunities for growth, barriers that may be standing in their way, and then their current action plan. This action plan would not be all-inclusive to everything that they are action planning for the entire year, but rather what they are currently working on. And so, you may see a change into the next one to reflect some of their new action planning. Again, once one thing is accomplished, we kind of move on and pick up the next item. So, how are we going to use this document? Well, in addition to sharing it with you this evening, which I really, I understand and know that it was a request of you all, we kind of have quickly come to light our little document here. And so, we have already asked our principals to share this with their SAC committees, their PTOs, and I'm working with our Technology Department, and it will be included on all the school homepages at the elementary level so that parents will also have the opportunity to look at the quick fact sheet. The other thing that we talked about is that as principals on assignment, myself, Mr. Kleimer, and Mr. Curly, that as we begin to visit our schools during this next quarter, using our quick fact sheet to talk about what are the opportunities for growth, what are the barriers standing in the way, and how can we help you with your action planning, we also thought would be an important next step. I want to briefly talk about Phase 2. Phase 2 will come, if you look at your calendar, June 12th, which will be the distribution of fourth-quarter quick fact sheets. Our goal for, to provide to you is quarter-four elementary quick fact sheets, to have middle-school quick fact sheets, and to at least begin discussions of what high-school quick fact sheets will look like. Some of their areas are a little more unique, and so we need to spend some time in discussion about what information we would be putting on the document. Finally, one of the things I'd like to notate is the only thing that is not included on this document that you as board members requested is VAM data, or what I believe you all refer to as evaluation data. It is not included on this document, but we do have specific information regarding VAM that's going to be shared at a separate meeting with you on May 8th. And the entire topic of that meeting will be connected to teacher VAM, because when we felt like you wanted to have information regarding teacher evaluations, we felt that it was connected truly to the VAM data results. And then finally, in the back of your binder, you will find a folder that's been rubber-banned that is each of the turnaround schools that presented at a recent board work session. I know in our last meeting together, you requested to have a copy of that data, and so it has been shared for you for each of the four schools that presented that afternoon or evening. Do you have any questions for me or for the team regarding our school quick fact sheets? We'd love to have your feedback.
Board members?
I would like to thank you. And I would like to thank Mr. James for requesting this. He's been talking about this a long time. And it's just exactly like a report card. It tells us exactly kind of what's going on. And so, Mr. James, thanks for pushing.
Thank you. I just want to thank you all for really putting in a tremendous amount of time and effort on this. It's something that I think we need as a community, really, to know where we are and where we're going. Looking at this and looking at what my thoughts were, my thoughts is that at our next work session, every time we meet and talk about these schools, this, it should be here somewhere in terms of what we're doing and how we're doing it. Because I know that you all are having meetings with the state as they come in, and this data will give us an opportunity to really keep up with what is being said in those meetings, if we are making any movement. So, this is indeed really a good step. And I want to just thank all you guys that were out there that's worked on this thing to make it really something that we can look at it and say, this is where we are, and we can actually see if we're moving. And thanks. This is what it is about to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. And the other thing, I think you and I are exactly on the same page. At our subsequent meetings, what we'd like to do, I'll use the example of the April 10th meeting, we'd really like to dive in and talk about attendance and discipline data. So, we would begin by talking about district trends, but then we would tie that back together before we left by tying that specifically back to our turnaround schools. So, each time we were to make one of those presentations and kind of talk about where we are as a district, I think I agree with you. It's important to tie that back to now, how does that relate to our turnaround schools and what do we have going on there? And in this particular example, would be connected to attendance and discipline.
And this is so correct. And see, when we look at our staffing plan for those turnaround schools, I'd like to, it should be connected to what we're getting here in terms of data. When they come in, I want to be able to look at what they're doing and saying, hey, if we're having a problem with the attendance or discipline or reading or whatever, let's look at what we need to do as a team to really put our emphasis in those particular areas. And I think this is the first step in providing us that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Before you leave, Ms. Beck, thank you all. I know that you did many revisions on this and really fretted the details. And board, as we move forward, will you just be playing in your mind what you see the high-school version looking like? Because I know they're struggling, and we're trying to struggle with how to get all of that data onto a one-pager. So, if you will be thinking of that and help us with that.
And I want to say fabulous job. And the way that you have outlaid this and formatted this is so user-friendly that I feel comfortable now talking to people about the schools that I represent. This is exactly the information we need. I have quite a feeling this could be a model for others, because this truly, truly is a fabulous tool. So...
Thank you very much, and I'm not going to take the credit. I'm going to thank my team.
Everybody, I mean, everybody that worked on this. I mean, great job. You have given us the information, and to be able to look at this on a quarterly basis and to see, as Mr. James says, are we moving that needle? Are we taking those reds into the yellow and those yellows into the green? That's what we need to see. So, congratulations. You have done exactly what we asked. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Seriously. They did an awesome job.
Okay, let's see. Okay. Dr. Craig Hamm, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, has a presentation addressing bus driver shortage concerns.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor. I'm giving you paper copies of the PowerPoint presentation that I'll be giving. And you'll notice that I have printed these with one slide per page and notes below, so you'll have my comments, so you don't have to write down what I say during the presentation. And certainly, we'll have opportunities for questions afterwards. You had asked me to investigate our issues with bus driver shortages, and my intent in this session is to go through this in a systematic way to talk about the challenges that we faced, what we've done so far to deal with those challenges, and our plans for the future. And some of that certainly was informed by the work session that we had not so long ago. I got it. The first question is, what were the challenges that we faced? And some of these challenges we inherited in November of 2016, based on decisions made by past administrations, and others are challenges that are created by both employee demographics as well as changes in the economy. And I've identified these four general areas that I'll address when I go through those challenges in our response. The biggest bear in the woods is bus driver wage. And I want to show you what happened and give you some history on that. And around 2011, the prior administration investigated privatization of the transportation function. And they did that because they were faced with a pay schedule, which was represented here as the U schedule in red. And that schedule had evolved over time to be both inflated and flat. And by flat, I mean, if you look at the difference in the wage rate on entry, and for someone with 30 years on the job, there was very little difference. That created two challenges. One, it created angst over what appeared to be a lack of upward progress in wages. And secondly, it became unaffordable for the district. And for that reason, the district talked about privatizing the transportation function. The bargaining agent for all of the blue-collar workers, and now I'm not just talking about bus drivers, but some 1,300 employees in various... about bus drivers, but some 1,300 employees in various classifications and specialties, the bargaining agent in an attempt to forestall the privatization of the bus driving function, agreed, and I think grudgingly so, to a second wage schedule, which became known as the I schedule and is shown in blue on the chart. And you'll note immediately that it was a very depressed schedule. And because of that, it created several problems for the district. Last year, we took action, and you approved a new schedule called the P schedule that was designed to try to remedy some of the problems that we inherited with those two wage schedules that had existed before. And in gray, you'll see the P schedule represented. And I want to talk about, and I will come back to this slide a couple of times as I go through the presentation, I want to talk about the challenges that we saw in the two wage schedules and hopefully the remedies that were promised by the P schedule. First of all, on the old U and I schedules, there was very obviously a perception that those who recently hired in, and whether they realized it on the day they signed up or after being on the job for a few months, that they were second-class citizens, that they would never rise to the level of those who were on the U schedule. That created a lot of turnover in the early ranks, not just with bus drivers, but with other classified specialties as well. The new P schedule gives a faster catch-up rate to try to close that gap. Also affecting the people who we were trying to recruit was our recruiting wage on that I schedule, because it was perceptively low. And the P schedule improved that, and we will continue to improve that over time. And finally, for the U schedule, as I talked about, the fact that it was very flat, and again, to revisit, only a difference of 55 cents per hour over a 30-year span, and the addition of the P schedule gives some slope to that and makes much more sense, in that there's a $4.50 difference over that 30-year period. Now, the first and obvious question was, well, why didn't we just move everybody up to the U schedule? That would have cost over $1 million, $1 million that the district did not have, and that's why the prior administration came up with the I schedule to begin with. And secondarily, it buys back that same problem, and that is that you have essentially a flat schedule that doesn't reward loyalty and productivity over time. Because of the problems with that schedule, we ran into a recruiting issue. Under the old schedule, we had a starting wage of $13.40 an hour. That is now at $14.65 per hour. Prior to last year, there was a guarantee of a four-hour workday for our bus drivers. We can talk all we want about the benefits that we provide, but at initial interview, when trying to recruit bus drivers, if you tell them, okay, we average over six hours per day per bus driver, but we'll guarantee you four, the only thing they really were hearing was, and when they went home to talk to the family, was they can only guarantee me four hours of work per day. And I think that turned off a number of people. It's incumbent on management, if you're averaging over six hours per day, to guarantee the six hours per day, which we negotiated with the union, and we have done that. So we now guarantee a minimum of six hours per day, and it makes it easier for us to hire people into the job. And finally, we had limited outreach prior to November of 16. We are becoming more aggressive, and I'm going to talk about an initiative that you suggested that we have taken to heart a little bit later in the presentation. The impact of this change is significant, not just for the people at the bottom end of the scale, but also for those at the top. And I really need to talk about three parts of the schedule. Understand that we're now hiring here rather than here. Everybody who was hired in and was on the blue I schedule was lifted this past year to the U, to the P schedule. Those people who were on the old U schedule were frozen. They didn't lose any money. They were frozen at that wage. And additionally, the union negotiated a bonus to be paid to them that averaged just over 2% of their annual wage. This is significant because these are our experienced drivers at the 23- and 24-year mark who are looking forward to retirement. Because the P schedule regains a slope at that point, people moving through this point move back onto the P schedule, and it has an advantage of increasing their HI5 calculation, which is what the state uses for FRS retirement. That HI5 calculation is very beneficial to our most senior drivers, who are typically retiring at that 24- to 29-year mark. The other change is the first five years. The people that we were bringing in the door now at a higher recruiting wage, also during their first five years on the old I schedule, would make about 75.8 over that five-year period. We immediately increased that to 82.7 cumulative wage for that first five years. So this, again, is something we can talk about when we're comparing the old to the new, and also when we are competing with other entities. Which brings me to the next slide, where I want to show you where we stand with respect to 13 other counties. And the counties here are chosen for two reasons. One, because they're like size, because they have about 40,000 students. And the second, because they're near us and we compete with them in recruiting local talent. I've highlighted Marion because our $14.65 starting wage ranks number two out of those 14 counties. And this in itself is deceiving, because the county that ranks number one, St. Lucie, doesn't start them at the beginning wage of 1531. They start them as subs at $13 per hour. So really, because we start people on scale, and we don't start them at a sub-rate, we are very competitive in what is now our new recruiting wage. Additionally, based on our February payroll, I ran an average of our 10-month bus drivers for an annual wage of just over $19,000. The DOE webpage reports a statewide average of 1,853. So we're above that for an annual wage. Now, understand, we still have people at that higher level that are on the, the old wage they had under the U schedule, and we're trying to bring up, and we will continue to negotiate to bring up, the P schedule. So this gap, I expect we will outpace any increases in the statewide average. In terms of our recruiting efforts, recruiting is about publicity. And if there's a failure that we've had in the past, it's that we have not really blown our own horn loud enough. And by that, I mean, some of the advantages of our pay scale, and in a minute, I'll talk about benefits, we haven't really put those into a form that we can hand to a prospective driver and make it appealing to them. And remember, when I talk about the wage schedule, it's not just 282 bus drivers, it's over 1,300 members of that collective bargaining unit. So we're also enhancing by lifting the P schedule, our ability to recruit and retain electricians, plumbers, carpenters, groundskeepers, custodial staff, our food service workers, the other people who are a part of that bargaining unit. We will repeat this through Career Source and have a, a big job fair. On Saturday, I was at the Paddock Mall talking to the PR people there about moving this up earlier, not waiting till August, but having a presence in the mall in July, so that as we get retirees moving to this area, people looking for another job, people who are trying to find a, a job for a spouse, we can have a presence and make our needs known to them as well. And finally, we want to become more aggressive in putting the banners, not just on the school buses through the summer months, but on fences and spending some money to use some of the electronic bulletin boards like you see on Pine or on 200, to highlight not only the opportunity to become a bus driver in Marion County, but some of the advantages that we have in attracting them to do that. During the last work session, you talked about having a recruiter. And we have decided that instead of cashiering that coordinator position in transportation, we're going to create a position, and we're developing the job description now, for a trainer recruiter. And those two things go hand in hand, because the training and recruiting efforts are complementary as to when they occur during the year. Mrs. Rora has already identified an asset who's a zone manager, who's a former DOT employee, who not only is a certified trainer in all of our specialties, but also will make an excellent recruiter to roll out this new plan and give us more visibility. And we're excited about that possibility. We also have an advantage over the other counties when it comes to bus driver benefits, and I've summarized those on this chart. Now, I will apologize, Sumter was a little late getting their benefits information to me, and I'll speak to that, but, but they are very similar to us with the exception that they do not fully fund their health care. All employees in Sumter pay for a portion of the health care premium. The vast majorities of the counties shown here pay a reduced rate during CDL training. We pay at the regular employee wage rate. Only about half of the counties are similar to us in that they pay full health insurance premiums, and they also pay for the DOT physical. And you'll see that it's district-paid, we're at the employee hourly rate for CDL training, and we have that fully-paid health insurance premium. I think these are benefits that, not just in comparing to other counties with whom we compete, but comparing to other job offers they might see in Marion County, these are attractive benefits. But they won't know it if we don't talk about it and we don't make it known. The next thing I want to talk about is absenteeism. Absenteeism is one of the things that creates problems when we have to combine runs or when we put substitute drivers on a run. There are things that seasonally influence absenteeism, but there are also some health and fitness issues that we have to deal with, and we have the unknowns, like Hurricane Irma and a flu outbreak, and those things that affect what happens with our bus-driving fleet. This shows you the number of hours of driver time off leave taken over a three-year period. And first, I want to talk about those seasonal influences, because it's very evident when you look at the blue and the red lines on the chart, that those normal years, 1516 and 1617, there's a gradual increase of time off taken during the year. This should be intuitive. As drivers accumulate accrued leave, they have enhanced opportunity to take the leave. But we also have things that happen seasonally, like hay fever, that may kick in and influence the amount of leave taken. So you see a gradual increase from August through April, and of course, they're not taking leave in June. But now I want to talk about this year, because this year is an anomaly in terms of that time off for two reasons. The first one is a spike here. And this represents the number of employees, not just bus drivers, but other employees, who took advantage of a liberal leave policy to take sick leave and ensure that they received a full paycheck during those times when they missed work because of what's called in the law a force majeure. A, the hurricane is certainly one of those things that can interfere with scheduled worktimes. The second one is the type A flu outbreak that we experienced in January and February, and you'll see that represented here. And we don't have the numbers yet for March, but it's coming back down in terms of the time off. When we look at absenteeism, we want to see what we can do to help. These seven programs are available for all of our employees, or almost all of them. Some are targeted specifically for the bus drivers. But the numbers represented on this chart are the participation by our bus drivers in a number of opportunities to be healthier, to remain fit, and hopefully to minimize time that they miss from work. You'll see the annual wellness screenings over the last two years, 219 participations by our bus drivers. Our mini well checks that were just conducted last month, 82 participants in that program. Our diabetes management program currently has 31 bus drivers enrolled in that program. We had an agreement with the Zone Health and Fitness 21-Day Challenge. This was in the fall of 16, and out of 85 who registered, 62 participated, and they had 21 days of free use to get in shape, and, and that's always a part of a health and wellness program. We don't present data on this weight management program, because Florida Blue only collects total numbers for the district and doesn't break it out, and there are HIPAA rules associated with participation in that. But we do know that there, we have people enrolled in that. And then finally, we'd like to work on tobacco cessation. We have a couple of participants last fall in that. As a former smoker, I can say that it's, it's a good idea to stop. If we look at an annual examination of when bus drivers leave us, it's very obvious that there are certain peaks. In May, at the end of the year, we're subject to retirements, to family relocations, and to losing people to competing entities who want to recruit our people. Likewise, over the summer, they leave, and we don't know about it until August rolls around and they don't show up. And, and that frequently happens with people who just move away and don't go through the formal process of checking out, they're just not there. Also, in January, there are people who retire at the end of a semester, so in January, we have another peak. But if you average the bus driver losses over the year, the typical monthly loss is just over 1% of our bus-driving force, or 3.6 drivers who leave us on average on a So the question is, what else are we doing besides continuing to boost that P schedule for all of our blue-collar employees? And besides spiking up the, the recruiting efforts, there's some other specific things. I already talked to you about this position that we've created as a trainer recruiter. And, and Mrs. Rora is very convinced that she has the right person for that, and we're excited about rolling that out. Since January 7th, we have trained and fielded 12 new drivers. Understand, that doesn't mean we tried to hire only 12, but by the time you get through the physical exam, the background checks, the certification, get them trained, certified, and then roll them out on the road, that's a pretty ambitious chunk since January 7th. We're also looking at the new CDL training program that Mr. Viennello is envisioning for the CTE program and how we might capitalize on that. This seems subtle, but it could be significant in terms of how we compete with other consumers of drivers. A change in the laws created a different type of a CDL that will be unique to bus drivers and won't necessarily entitle them to be over-the-road 18-wheeler operators. And if we make that distinction, if we start training for that particular CDL, it may gives us, give us some insulation. give us some insulation against competing with other entities who want them to drive big rigs or for other purposes. We're still evaluating the nature of that law change. We're also considering a pre-employment agreement to help cut down on the people who we expend money to train them, and then they jump to other employers. This isn't something that would be in the contract, because they wouldn't be employees yet, but it would be an agreement that if we're going to train you and get you certified and put you on the road, that over a certain number of years, you would amortize the cost. And if you leave early, you would at least have to pay us back for some of the costs that we invested in you. This is fairly standard throughout the industry. We just haven't done it yet. And of course, we'll be back at the bargaining table with the IUPAT to continue to lift that P schedule, close up the gap with the old U schedule, probably also give a bonus to those people who are frozen, and move back that intersection point so at an earlier point, they jump back on the ascending wage schedule from their old U scale where they were frozen. We're looking forward to continuing to solve these problems. Rome wasn't built in a day, and we didn't really create the biggest problem that we've had to wrestle with, but we're very pleased that we've been able to make some progress and we see the light at the end of the tunnel. I would like to open it up for your questions.
Any questions, Ms. Stacy?
I have a question, have a comment. I think the employment agreement is a great idea to encourage them to stay with us. I mean, we do it like all businesses. You come work for us for a certain amount of time, we'll help you with your education and/or you owe us back. So that's a great business tool to tag onto this to help it. And I've done some checking around the state also, and our starting salary is great compared to the state. I have a school board member friend in Indian River, and it's been a couple of months since I checked, but they guarantee like seven hours. They guarantee a little more.
Indian River, I didn't have it up here because they're not...
They're not right, but that's just one...
They have two high schools and four middle schools.
They only have like 100 drivers, and we've got 300.
Their starting wage is $13.89, which would rank sixth on the chart.
Well, when I talked to them, it was like $14.10 or something like that. It wasn't as high as ours, but it was like $14.25, I think, and ours is $14.65.
And they may have increased it this year. I'm going with DOE data.
But they guarantee seven hours. But they also have a nice pool of fill-in substitutes, and that's what really helps them. But I know we can't get the ones to get on the bus in the first place, so it's hard to get substitutes. But at least we're working on it and working hard on it. And the recruiter, I'm happy about that.
Mr. James, do you have anything?
Dr. Ham, that's a really good presentation, but I would like to have seen it at a work session, to be honest with you, so I can have some other people can stand up and ask questions on the other side of this thing. And, you know, I don't want to say...
That's why we bring it to the board meeting, but have that been...
I understand that, but that's really a nice presentation. But I know I'm only on one side of looking in, but I want those other people on the other side asking questions as well. And I know you guys are saying we brought it to the board meeting, but I'm telling you, there's some people got some other questions, because, you know, everyone, it looked really, really good, but I want to hear what the other people are saying about it.
I know Ms. Weingard is here, and during the public comment, they may add...
Well, that's good. If they're going to say something, then that's fine, but usually, I like for it to go back and forth. And nothing wrong with what I'm saying. All I'm saying is I boom, and I like for it to go back and forth. So that's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, in 2008, when we were, the budget was decreasing, decreased, and now in 2011, when IUP came together to sort of agree so that we could sell our income because we'd get, you know, settled, so it would be okay. So now that we're coming back, I'm just looking at this and saying, you know, I want to say this was some good information, you know, and want people to think about it. 2008, when the federal budget was down, you know, and we didn't have, everybody, we didn't have no money, you know, we had to call for the city, for the city, for the people. So I think this information is, well, like I said, I think is, really, I will ask some more questions, because I would like to listen also to some of the other board members too, because that way, you know, but I think this is the beginning, but thank you.
Please, King.
Yeah, I would like for us to have a work session too, because I do have some questions and some comments. With the trainer recruiter, I think that sounds good. I would like a description because, well, I'm probably ahead of myself.
They're working on a job description.
Yeah, so they're working on that now, which is good. I'm looking at the challenges, and I see the wage schedules, the obstacles, the absenteeism entities, but what I'm not seeing when we're recruiting in this packet, I didn't see what we're doing to maintain, you know. So we need to, like, get their attention, and then we also need to maintain them. And I do have some questions, like, do our bus drivers, do we have lead drivers, you know, so if, you know, our new bus drivers, if they have any, you know, concerns or any obstacles that they run across, I'm curious if they have lead drivers and how many, like, if there are any, how many, you know, buses or routes are they leading? I have questions also about the training that our bus drivers receive. Do they get hands-on experience, or is it all virtual? Like, are they learning on the computers, and then they're on a school bus and with, you know, 77 or 83 students and not feel comfortable? And that might be for a later discussion, but these are just some things that...
And I was going to suggest, perhaps, any questions that you have. Make a list of the questions, and we'll get them to Dr. Ham, and we will bring them back, because I think the buses are going to continue to be a topic that we'll need to address.
I don't know what Kelly King said.
I'm sorry.
Right. And I just do, because I want to make sure I understand things, and what I want to look at also is to make sure we're making sure that the obstacle, obstacles are removed. So, for example, if we have a software program where we're rerouting our buses, it doesn't work. Are there glitches? If it doesn't work, then, you know, as a board, we need to be looking at that. And I also would like the aides, the bus aides included in that, please, and the rest I'll email to you.
I've got a couple to add. I'd like to know about the camera situation, how we're doing. I know we've been working on trying to get the cameras on and get them actually working and stuff, and so that...
I know they are.
That we're going...
I know we pulled video recently...
Well, I know last year, we had, last year we had an issue, and we didn't, and it wasn't, so I know y'all were working on it. I didn't, but we just haven't talked about it to know where we are now with it all, so that the bus drivers have protection when things happen and they get accused of things, and we have a camera that's working to make sure that they're covered.
Mr. Art.
I'm going to say this, say this again, now, as a school board, these things connect. What we talk about connects, and I hope y'all will understand where I am, what I'm saying. Out of all the things that we've said, nobody's talked to me about the budget and where this money coming from, how much more are we spending this year than we will spend next year? And somewhere along the line, when we start figuring out all these things, I want somebody to tell us how much this is going to cost for us to do all of these things. And I know these are grand ideas, and I love them. They're beautiful. That's why we need to have a work session, so I can get Ms. Ellis up here, and she can tell us while she don't know how much it's going to cost as of yet, because these are things that will kill us as a board if we are wanting all of this and we're not looking at how much it's costing.
I don't even know if we have it. That's what my questions are. Like, that's why we need to have a work session, because I'm like, well, do we, do we have it? And for example, are our bus drivers utilizing their time correctly? So if they have six hours and say they have a four-hour bus route, if there's extra time, are they maybe being utilized as an aide or, you know, I think there's ways that we can look at this.
Yeah, but we need to, I agree with you. We need to figure out what we're doing here.
Yeah, we do.
Because this is a beautiful horse, but how much does it cost?
Well, we are in the budget cycle now, and those entities are submitting their budgets, and you all have approved a timeline on developing that budget.
But Doc, I realize I'm off-subject again. I don't like for you to tell me how beautiful this thing and, you know, have a price on it. Tell me what the budget, what our money look like now, and it's coming. I want to know what the money look like. Okay.
All right, so I think we will definitely have another work session on the buses, and I am also interested in the retention piece of this, which may be a part of the new job description, but we just need to really, because recruiting's one thing, but retention is another whole issue. So, okay?
And we are so pleased to provide this at a work session, and as I clarify, every time somebody brings up a topic, would you like it at a work session or a board meeting? And this was requested for the board meeting, so we did it with fidelity as requested. So instead of saying Dr. Ham erred, or he should have done something, please direct that to me, because I scheduled that. Thank you.
No, I think we asked for it. I don't think Dr. Ham erred at all, so...
Doc, you didn't err, Doc. You didn't err.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Ham. May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the month of April as Autism Awareness Moved by Ms. Boynton. Seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we have to push our little buttons, too. Brenda? Ms. Stacy?
Oh, forgot I had it messed up on here again.
Motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, Ms. Liz Fields, Director of Exceptional Student Education, along with Ms. Norma Barnes and Wolfpack students, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation. Here you are.
Honored to read this tonight. It says, "Whereas autism is a complex developmental disability typically appearing during the first three years of life, and it is estimated to occur in one out of every 68 children, and is five times more prevalent in boys than girls, but knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries. Whereas autism affects the normal development of the brain in the areas of reasoning, social interaction, and communication skills, and children and adults with autism typically have difficulties in verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and leisure activities. Whereas autism has wide-ranging implications for the entire family of the diagnosed individual, and early diagnosis, research, training, education, and therapy are vital to reducing the negative effects of autism. Whereas significant progress has been made in the last 30 years in the areas of research, medication, diagnosis, and therapies for autism, resulting in an improved quality of life for individuals living with autism and for their families. Whereas autism is a complex disability requiring research to find a cure and prevention, as well as increased recognition and understanding to ensure individuals with autism are accurately diagnosed and appropriately treated throughout their lives. Autism is the fastest-growing developmental disorder yet most underfunded. And whereas it is in our interest as a school district and community to recognize achievements in this field and continue these efforts by promoting the awareness and fostering the understanding of autism, now therefore be it resolved that the Marion County School Board and Superintendent of Schools hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness Month in Marion County to increase awareness and compassion in our community." And each of you has signed and dated this this evening, so Ms. Fields, on behalf of the Board and Superintendent, I'll present it to you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, I am very excited to be here and talk not only about autism awareness, but more so autism acceptance. So Ms. Barnes is here from Westport High School to talk about the Wolfpack United, which is one step towards having our community accept students with autism, and she has also some members here that will be speaking with you tonight about the steps that we have and sharing some events that we have planned this month of April with our schools.
Hi, thank you for having us. So for those of you who don't know, Wolfpack United is a peer mentoring program out of Westport High School. What we do is we take students who are on the spectrum or students with any exceptionality, and we pair them with a student from our various magnet programs in hopes of creating more social, academic, and post-secondary opportunities for those students. We do not discriminate, so any exceptionality is welcome to participate in this program. Our first year last year, we had about 10 to 15 students, and this year, we've got about 60 students participating. So it's been a really great thing to watch just unfold at Westport High School, because, you know, we're the biggest school in the county, and I firmly believe that if we can do it at Westport, it can be done anywhere. So we have some really fun, exciting things coming up for Autism Acceptance Month. Ms. Fields and Ms. Perry have really put some great things together. So Tuesday, April 2nd, is World Autism Awareness Day, and we're going to encourage students to wear blue, which is the worldwide color for autism, and we're going to take pictures and send it to, you know, post it on Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, Facebook, to really promote this within Marion County public schools. On April, from April 9th to 20th, we're going to celebrate neurodiversity, and we're going to have students decorate autism puzzle pieces. This is the national symbol for autism awareness, and it's the symbol because each person on the spectrum is unique, and they just, the puzzle piece represents the unique piece that they contribute to the overall picture. And then on Friday, April 27th, we are selling Marion County Public School Autism Acceptance T-shirts, and so we'll get that link sent out. And for the funds from those T-shirts, we'll go to help support programs at other schools that work with me to help get these programs started at their school. And I know for Westport High School, we've got some exciting things coming up. We're actually going to celebrate autism awareness with the Orlando Magic next week. They have invited us to an autism awareness game. They're playing the Mavericks that night, so it should be a good game. We're going to get to go on the court for some pre-game warm-up stuff and then do some post-game pictures, but we have a charter bus, and it's going to be students, parents, teachers, administrators going to the Amway to celebrate autism awareness. So we're super excited about that. And then we have a picnic on April 14th at Baseline Park. My sponsors are called the Village Angels. They are a group of seniors who meet once every other month to talk about their loved ones on the spectrum, and so they have been so gracious to us in funding everything that we have ever needed, and so they are putting on this picnic, and we would like to invite you to come celebrate autism awareness with us and autism acceptance. So I'll have Ms. Fields and Ms. Perry send that information out to you as soon as possible. What I would like to do is introduce two students. These students are both mentors in the program, and I think that the best way to hear about the program is from the students, so they're going to speak briefly about their unique experiences through Wolfpack United. I'm the flyer. Okay. And so I'll introduce Jace Howard first.
Hello, everybody. How are all of you doing today?
Jace, how are you?
Amazing, Ms. Heidi. Being autistic, oh, sorry. Ms. Barnes once asked me, what is my unique perspective being a member of Wolfpack United? Being autistic, I know that being autistic has its good parts and its bad parts. Good parts being that I have the ability to think well and do well, and bad parts meaning I have a difficulty socializing at times. And my second point is that it's awesome for me to hang out and go with my mentee, James, who I consider one of my best friends of all time, and I am indebted to Ms. Barnes and Wolfpack United for being part of it. Thank you. And, well, my third and final part is that many people on the spectrum are world changers. There are people like Thomas Jefferson and Albert Einstein were thought to be on the spectrum, and Temple Grandin is also a revolutionary who helps us explain ourselves and serves as a role model for us. And, well, what are we doing by ESE? We're helping these people go to the real world and show themselves to be the best they can be and make the world a better place. Why does Wolfpack United need to be in more schools? Because if we aren't, we're, we're, well, we need to, forgive me. The beautiful minds will make the world a better place, so... So if we aren't doing this in all the other schools, then we're throwing all of that away. Thank you all for having me. Thank you all for being awesome.
And the next student I'll have present briefly is Ms. Madison Murphy. She's actually been with the program since the beginning, and to watch her and her mentee interact for the past three years has just been amazing, and I'll let her describe that, because she can do that better than I can.
Good evening. I'm Madison Murphy, and I'm the President of Wolfpack United. Starting out in Wolfpack United, I was really nervous, because I knew I wanted to make a change, but I was hesitant on whether I would or not. And being with my mentee, watching her grow the past two years has been amazing. I meet with her once a week, and we go hang out during lunch, and we do all these things together. And she has opened up to me more, she's opened up to other people, she talks to my friends, and she, I've watched her socialize with her friends more and open up more. And this program has a tremendous impact. There are so many kids coming to me, I want to join Wolfpack United, how do I do it? I want to help, how do I do it? And I think that's amazing that we've made that much awareness in our school and that we've impacted not just people in the ASD unit, but also people outside of it that want to join, that want to help, that want to make a difference. And I think that having this program in other schools is very necessary so that we can include everyone in our school community and help everyone and help each other, and allow these kids to grow and to socialize and to become a better version of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for having us this evening.
Anybody?
One of the parents, the father who lost his daughter in the horrific shooting down in Broward County, he doesn't support walkouts, but he supports walk-ups. And he said, because he doesn't believe the guns caused the problem, he believes that children that have been ostracized or bullied or picked on, you know, they get angry and they have issues that they hold inside. And he is now speaking, I've seen him on several, I've seen him on several news shows, I've heard him on the radio, and asking the students to walk up, not walk out. Walk up to friends. If you see a friend that's in the corner and he's quiet, walk up to him. See what's going on in his world and get him to talk. If you see someone sitting at lunch alone, walk up and join them. And he said, he believes that promoting that among our students, because so many have broken families, and they think they're the only one that lives in that world. And this man lost his daughter, beautiful girl, and he's out very actively promoting walk up, not walk out. And so, and I see that in your program where you do, you mentor one another. And that's what he believes will make a difference in America, in our schools, is to, because we do have such a new culture, and so many children feel lonely, and so many parents, there's parents that are on drugs, and the children are lost, and that if we encourage that in our schools, that that would probably do more than anything to turn some of these children that are so incredibly mentally ill, and maybe to get them talking about it, where you can help them get some help. So thank you for bringing that to us, because you're kind of doing that already, just not exactly like that. Thank you.
Talk with us just a little bit on how do you continue the program when you have one class that graduated, another one come in? How do you get the other kids to get involved?
Well, we start targeting the students. So I'm the case manager for the students when they start as freshmen. So as soon as I meet them, I hit the ground running, and I, my wheels start turning as to which student I know that I could potentially pair them up with. And so we catch them as freshmen, and we just shepherd them through high school until their senior year.
Okay. So you never have a turnover in reference to not having enough students involved or wanting to be involved in the program?
Right now, our problem is that we have more students wanting to be mentors than we have a need for mentees. So that's a good problem to have.
Okay. This is what I was getting at. I wanted to know, how contagious is it? Everybody gets so excited about it, being a part of something like this, so it's really neat to hear that. Thank you.
Dr. Mayor?
Chase?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get a fist bump?
Oh, of course.
That's awesome. Chase, um, Chase, you're my new hero. Well, do you know that we share something?
What's that?
Do you know that I have autism?
Really?
Uh-huh.
You're autistic, too?
I am. I am. And thanks to Ms. Barnes. If I would have had a teacher like you, it wouldn't have taken me 45 years to embrace what makes me unique. And while my story didn't come out like I wanted it to, I'm so grateful, because God works in mysterious ways, I'm so grateful that it did, and that now people see, Chase, by your example and your colleagues, that it is not something to be ashamed of or mocked, it's something to be celebrated, because we are unique, Chase. And I'm just so proud to be able to say that we are related. Thank you. Thank you, Chase, so are you. And Ms. Barnes, so are you, and thank you.
Madison, Madison, thank you for your leadership as a student. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and I applaud you. So thank you very much. Good luck, Chase.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'm going to end with Chase, you're awesome.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all for having me.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the month of April as School Library Month? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote aye. Any opposed, like, sign. Ms. Boynton? Motion passed five-zero. Mr. Christian, Coordinator of, and Ms. Crystal Sizemore, Coordinator of Special Programs, along with library and representatives, please come forward, please read and present the proclamation.
We are ready to.
You are here. Read and present the proclamation.
This proclamation reads, "Whereas library programs ensure all students and staff are effective users of ideas and information. Whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school. Whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the library specialist in each school to teach the skills of locating, evaluating, and using information found in traditional resources and new technologies to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading for every student. Whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools. Whereas the library program contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. And whereas the school librarians of Marion County, some of whom you see here tonight, have dedicated themselves to work for quality library programs for all students, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of Marion County Schools does hereby proclaim April 2018 as School Library Month in all of the public schools of Marion County, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Marion County to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month." So Ms. Sizemore, I will turn this over to you. You can share who you've brought with you tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for having us. We appreciate that you guys are recognizing School Library Month. School library programs prepare students for lifelong learning. I have some amazing librarians up here today to represent the amazing things that are going on in our schools. We have Jennifer Thomas from Bellevue Middle, Daniella Jason from Horizon Academy, Julie Quaid from Howard Middle, Laura Kutz from Lake Weir Middle, Robin Cooper from East Marion, and David Hartley from Spire Elementary. Our librarians are working really hard right now. If you walked into their libraries, they're in the middle of doing Holocaust Remembrance Day projects for their school. A lot of them are also the spearheads and in charge of the booths for their school, and will be represented at Dr. Mayor's Superintendent's Literacy Festival. So we've got a lot of great things going on in our libraries, and we just thank you for supporting school libraries and school library programs.
Thank you all very much for everything you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the Second Annual Superintendent's Literacy Festival to be held on Saturday, April 7th, 2018? Moved by Ms. Boynton. Seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor, please vote aye. Motion passed five-zero. Mr. Christian and Dr. Mayor, please read and present the proclamation.
I'm going to do something a little unorthodox, if that's okay.
That's cute.
This is about you, okay? This proclamation reads, "Whereas the citizens of Marion County, Florida stand firmly committed to promoting early reading and literacy skills as the catalyst for our children's future academic success, their preparation to be successful community leaders, and their ability to sustain a healthy and rewarding life. Whereas Marion County Public Schools, in partnership with the Early Learning Coalition of Marion County, the Read Aloud 15 Minutes Program and private childcare facilities have provided significant leadership in the areas of community involvement to educate our children, grounded in the principle that early educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life." I'm just about finished. "Whereas the Second Annual Superintendent's Literacy Festival, a community-wide celebration of the joy of reading, will be held Saturday, April 7th, 2018. This festival promotes the important role early literacy skills play in children's development and encourages reading and adult involvement in the education of our community's students. And whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida calls on the citizens of Marion County to assure every child has access to quality literary materials and is committed to reading together with a caring adult on April 7th, 2018, now therefore be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida enthusiastically endorses the Second Annual Superintendent's Literacy Festival and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities making our community's children, like this little guy, the best readers in the world." And of course, each of you have signed and dated it, and this little guy's getting heavy, so I'm going to set him down. So Dr. Mayor, I'll present this to you, and I know you have a bundle of joy there in your arms, too.
Yes, well, thank you so much for your support of literacy, of literacy programs, and of our festival. And this will be the second year, so the second annual now, and so that we can inspire kids like Ms. B. here to share their books and their love of reading, along with their friends and their moms, who are both teachers in our system. So ladies, did you want to say something about reading and your children?
Well, we just want to say that the earlier you start, the better with your kids. From very young age, we've read to our daughter every night, and we just adopted the Saddlewood Way at home, read, 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 and read some more. And her love of books has just soared, and we're just very excited for this event. We can't wait.
Yes, we can't say enough about making sure you read every night. Make sure you ask your kids about what they're reading. Talk to them, take them through the bookstore, let them pick out whatever kind of book they want, even if it's the Monster Jam book for the third night in a row.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 18-03 that amends Resolution 18-01 to include use of the one mil ad valorem tax for safe schools for the referendum? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion?
I'll discuss a little bit. I'd like to share why I won't be, why I won't be supporting it, because I believe the music and the art referendum is very, very important. And in future boards, if this referendum continues, I don't want safety to take over our program. And I know we have a great watchful eye, we have a great committee, but they really can just advise, they can't really stop the board from doing anything. So I would be supporting this if we had a dollar figure, if we said, you know, it was going to be 2 million of it, or 1.5 million of it. But just to leave it open, I don't want anything to come from the classroom, so that is the reason I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Any else? Okay. Oh, Ms. Boynton, I'm sorry.
I just, well, I just, as you're saying, well, I believe in our physical education, the art, music, library. I believe in that, and I know without, without, with that fund, the funding that we, the referendum.
Referendum.
Thank you. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't have the more physical education, art, music. And I understand what Nancy was saying, that we need to have like a cap so you can see how much. And I believe in what you're saying, Nancy, but I also believe in for our students and for our teachers, you know? We need that, so.
Oh, I agree.
So I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to vote for it, because I believe in, for our county, for our county, I believe that we need that for that, so. But I believe what you're saying, Nancy.
The thing, I'm going to jump in there just for a little bit. One of the things I will say more than anything else, art, music, PE, and our vocational trainers is important, but the safety of our kids is also important. And things have changed since we, since we put our last referendum on the ballot. The thing I will say to you more than anything else, it's, we get things from the state office. They give us mandates, and they don't give us money to fully support these things. And we have to be ahead of the curve on this particular thing here, in the sense that we know that we don't have enough money coming down to provide the safety that we need at our schools. And I just think it would behooves us if we did not put it out there and let people decide as well about art and music, because I'm going to tell you, it's hard to draw when you're looking over your shoulder and you're hearing a sound that you can't explain. It's important that we, as a group, recognize the fact that this is an important issue, and I think the whole country is wrestling with this. And this is why I urge all of us out there, whether you're listening or you're, or hear about this, support this, because we need it. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. Motion passed four to one. Motion passed four to one. Thank you. I will now ask the School Board's attorney to, as far as governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. Completed forms were due to the School Board Secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five speakers who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. If the speaker has one minute remaining, or when the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner, therefore verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the Board's rules.
Thank you. Board members, we have six speakers tonight. Do you want to give them the five minutes, or would you like to shorten it to three?
Are any of them on the same subject?
No. Five? Okay, they'll have five minutes. Ms. Flotketter?
Mr. Henry DeGeneste.
Please state your name and your address, sir.
Henry DeGeneste, 5445 Northeast First Lane, Ocala, Florida. Just to give you a little background of who I am, I'm the former Director of Public Safety, Superintendent of Police of the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. And I'm gonna speak on why it seems that we're pushing to arm teachers with guns, and I think it's a very, very bad idea. There is no question that we can do more to ensure that schools are safer, but arming teachers with guns is not one of them. First and foremost, the vast majority of teachers don't want to be armed with guns. We've had several polls recently, and only maybe about 10% of teachers across the United States feel that way. And I don't think they would ever have the expertise required to be first responders like trained law enforcement professionals. No amount of part-time training can prepare an armed teacher with a handgun to confront an armed assailant with a semi-automatic AR-15-type rifle that's loaded with armor-piercing ammunition. Teachers, principals, superintendents, and school boards need to ensure that schools are safe sanctuaries for educating our young people and not armed camps. I come from a family of educators, and I know that a teacher's first instinct is to protect their children, not engage in an armed shootout that would place more kids in harm's way. Besides, the good guy with a gun theory might give some misinformed people an illusion of safety, but I can assure you that it would make our children's classrooms less safe. Let me just pose some questions relative to how would you, as a School Board, develop policies to arm teachers? Would teachers be expected to regularly recertify, as my former police officers do, at least three times a year on a combat course? Or would they train like law enforcement SWAT team members once a month? Would teachers carry guns at their ready in a hip holster like cops do? Would every classroom with an armed teacher have a gun locker? Would teachers be required to get their students to safety first when alerted to a possible shooter? Or if the gun is in a gun locker, retrieve the gun first? What is the risk of a disruptive student, like my grandson, who's six feet five, who's a middle linebacker in high school, confronting an armed teacher if he came in and had a bad day that day? And that teacher has a gun in a gun locker and is able to get that gun, especially in light of the frauder, stand your ground law? Just think about that. Would teachers also be held liable for their actions or decisions when it comes to firing a gun? Would teachers get handguns or military-style weapons similar to the AR-15 assault rifle? Another decision. And here's the thing, I've heard so much about cost. Who would pay for the millions of dollars for guns, ammunition, that really required extra training, and more important than that, the increased cost of liability insurance? The Marion County school system is presently struggling to pay, as I know, for more guidance counselors, nurses, psychologists, social workers, increased compensation for teachers, and more school resource officers. We also have a lot of infrastructure needs here in this system. Who's gonna pay for that? We need to find the money somewhere. I've heard arguments that having schools as a gun-free zone makes them more vulnerable to mass shootings. Just think about it, hospitals are gun-free zones, courthouses are, our city hall is a gun-free zone, most government buildings are gun-free zones. Are they more vulnerable? What they do is, they build security and infrastructure within their facilities. That's what we need to think about, doing certain things to keep our schools and the infrastructure in those schools safer, not adding more guns to the equation. Let's keep our schools safe, protect our schools with appropriate physical security, and train law enforcement officers to protect our kids. Thank you.
My name is Frankie Ritchie Roberts, R-O-B-E-R-T-S. I live at 4360 Northeast 25th Avenue. Good evening, School Board members, Vice Chair, Superintendent, Madam Chair, Mr. Griggs, Ms. Brenda. I would like to start with clarification that I am not selling a program, but rather a request for an intensive reading intervention strategy to be implemented in the turnaround schools for the 1819 school year. I presented this ideal a few years ago to admin, and I was told in mid-sentence, it is not in the budget. I went to a second admin, and he listened and agreed that it was needed, however, it was not in the budget. Last year, Marion County had over 300 students retained in third grade, and the district implemented a one-time-only, excuse me, pilot program called Slam Dunk. I was a co-teacher at Evergreen for this pilot. We had 14 out of 16 students obtain games. One student went from a Level 1 to a Level 3, considered proficient. Five students went from a Level 1 to Level 2. And finally, eight students moved up within the Level 1 from a 1.1 to a 1.2 or 1.3. Only two students remained at that 1.1 status. With this 88% success rate at our F-school, I was surprised that this pilot did not continue for this school year. Does everybody have your handouts? Okay, good. Since I'm being timed, I'll talk as fast as I can, efficiently as I can. The first handout you see is detailed information on how top school admin can continue an intensive reading intervention. In the A in session, it would consist of two teachers, a gen ed and an ESE teacher, with four basic rotations, reading centers. In the middle of the handout is a list of 10 advantages for this true inclusion ELA setting. Also, the A M. session focuses on basic reading skills according to the student's level, whether it be first grade or second grade. The second handout provides detailed information on how the centers could be arranged and possible programs that the district is currently using. Once again, I am not selling or promoting a program or programs, but rather a template, providing a template on how Marion County Public Schools can have an intensive reading intervention for third-grade retainees, fourth-grade Level 1, and fifth-grade Level 1 and 2s ELA students. We must close the gap before middle school. At the bottom of this handout is information about the afternoon session, which consists of endurance reading with material that is on grade level. Students are taught test-taking strategies, time management, and, sorry, students are taught test-taking strategies, time management, and independent skills during the endurance session in the PM. At the end of the week, a time of reflection, also known as celebration, is provided to motivate and encourage students for all of their accomplishments. The third handout is a bookmark. It helps students to stay focused during the practice session test in the afternoon, and the term Operation Read has a military intent, because we are in a battle for our children's future here in Marion County. On February the 15th, I attended a School Board work session and heard Dr. Thomas or Thompson from DOE, when she stated Marion County was issued a check for $1 million for the four turnaround schools, Oak Crest, Greenway, Wyamina, and Evergreen. All I thought was, we finally have funds. Yay, I was excited that day. We can now look at an intensive reading intervention that can be put in the budget. Since these funds were not released until late in the first semester, early in the second semester, there should be some funds available for the 201819 school year. With your help and your leadership, these handouts can be shared with others, so we can start to provide hope for hundreds of struggling students throughout our district. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Please see the back of the handout for more information on the Florida statutes and the reading-intensive program. Any questions? Okay.
Jean Hotaling?
Jean Hotaling, H-O-T-A-L-I-N-G, and I live at 2391 Southwest 7th Avenue, here in Ocala, Florida. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address you on a subject that is of considerable concern to myself and my colleagues. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the art teachers of Marion County. We all listened with great interest earlier this month to your proclamation recognizing the importance of art in a well-rounded education, and we certainly appreciate the praise and recognition. It's well-deserved. I believe that the art educators of Marion County go far beyond their required duties to deliver a quality arts education program to their students. Regrettably, praise and recognition are not enough. It goes without saying that in order to make art, you must have materials, canvas, paper, paint, scripts, costumes, brushes, markers. All of these elements are tantamount to a successful art program and instruction. Tonight, I'm asking you for realistic funding for the arts in Marion County schools. I've supplied you with a document that details the art supply budget for some 31 respondents to my question. Ms. Flotketter, did you distribute that to them?
No, I did not make the copies. I thought you were just giving me a copy for approval.
Well, I did give you a copy for approval, and I will forward you guys this document probably tomorrow morning. Needless to say, I asked our art teachers what their budget was for their schools, and I got 31 respondents. The first thing I noticed about the list is its lack of consistency. No two schools fund their art programs equally. It's clearly up to the whim of each administrator how they will fund the arts in their school. I'll call your attention to a few statements, which you can read on your own tomorrow. The first one, "I have desperately needed materials that I eventually purchased with my own money." Another teacher responds, "For the last two years, the art room was allocated $50." Another says, "Our art budget is about $100, plus any money I get from fundraisers." Another one says, "At my school, I fundraise all year." Another one says, "My principal is giving me $40 next year. It's the same as he's giving to his classroom teachers." To be fair, there are art budgets on the list of, in excess of $700. But let's be clear, these are schools with 7, 8, 900 students, high schools with many more. It's my understanding that the elementary schools received a dollar per student for art supplies from the referendum. I don't know when the last time you bought any art supplies, but paper, paintbrushes, crayons are all quite expensive. A dollar doesn't go too far. What the list illustrates is a general lack of proper funding for our arts programs. Which brings me to my program. I teach at Westport High School. Westport High School is Marion County's performing and visual arts magnet. With some 14 fine arts programs, we are a premier arts facility. We're talented students, further their arts experience, and prepare for careers in the arts. Westport is a Florida arts model school, one of only two in the state of Florida. Students in all our programs are excelling at the highest level in local, state, and national competitions. We perform and display our work throughout the year at community, state, national, and even international events. Our students earn massive scholarships to the very best art schools in the country and go on to successful careers in the arts. In truth, our reputation precedes me and speaks volumes about the commitment of our teachers and our administration. But outside of our $100 copy budget, our programs receive $0 from our administration, $0 for art supplies, $0 for scripts and costumes, $0 for dance, $0 for music. Our programs are funded by booster organizations, fundraising efforts, in some cases, ticket sales, and a fee that we charge our students. I'm gonna repeat that, a fee we charge our students. Ladies and gentlemen, it's unconscionable that we charge students for an education in the arts. I hate to imagine the dilemma of a talented young person who can't afford this fee, the embarrassment of not being able to pay, the decision to simply not take art or music because they can't afford it. I submit to you that this is not support for the arts or support for our art students. Everyone wants to bask in the art spotlight. We love art, our community craves art, our students profit and enjoy the arts. My desk and inbox are full of art contests, events, and community requests. Earlier this month, you proclaimed your undying allegiance to an educational environment that includes the arts, but are we really supporting them? In truth, the success of our programs has rested squarely on the backs of our teachers, who dedicate countless hours to fundraising, performing, and exhibiting their students' work. So tonight, I'm asking for realistic funding for the arts in Marion County schools, not on a school-by-school basis, but by direct district support for our programs. I'd ask you to begin guaranteeing every elementary art and music teacher a base funding of $5 per student. I would ask that you fund our secondary art programs at a rate of $75 per participant. And finally, in addition to the praise, I'd ask you to recognize our hard-working visual and performing arts teachers with a modest stipend that partially compensates them for the hundreds of hours of extra time and effort that they've invested in our students. Thank you for your, oh, my time's expired. Thank you for your attention this evening.
Very nice presentation, thank you.
Ed Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N, 6960 Southwest 155th Street, Dunell, Florida. Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing tonight? Good, I hope. There's been a lot of good stuff here tonight, and I'm glad to hear that. I have a little more. The National Day of Prayer in Ocala is coming up again. It'll just be our fourth year doing it. It's May 3rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It'll be held downtown on the square, as it has been for the other three years. We have many churches participating. And then at 2:00, we're gonna start with a very patriotic portion of the program. It's open to all elected officials, of course, it's open to the public, but we're gonna be focusing on the National Anthem and on our elected officials and praying for each party. and on our elected officials and praying for each part of government, including the school board, city, county, state, on up. So please, please plan to attend and help spread the word that good things are happening in Marion County. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Chris Altobello?
Chris Altobello, A-L-T-O-B-E-L-L-O, 2020 Northeast Marion, or Northeast 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent. Tonight, I'm here to talk about and discuss the events that took place in Tallahassee on Sunday, March 11th. Sunday, March 11th, the budget was approved by our state legislature. You're probably here as you go around and talk with our politicians that this was an historic budget. I mean, $484, $485 million increase to our FEFP is historic, they're going to tell you. Well, in reality, the budget that they voted on on the 11th was anything but historic. It basically solidifies the legislature's disregard for Florida's public schools. This is most evident in the base student allocation, which grows by a whopping 47 cents per child. I did a little something. I gave myself a little test. We all like tests. It's not a standardized test, but I took a little test, and I kind of used this thing that maybe elementary kids do. I'll give you guys a copy of it. And as a good teacher-
We can't.
-can't accept that? Okay. Well, as any good teacher will do, is that they'll write something on the bottom of it praising their student. So I actually got it right. I got the, and I brought here some manipulatives. I got a quarter. I got a dime, and another dime, and two pennies. And I got it right. I got 47 cents on my test. And the little note that I got was, "Chris, you answered correctly. This is the base student allocation increase that we approved for your child. And love Tallahassee." So my point is that a base student allocation is where we have the most flexibility and where we get the ability to fund the programs that I've heard a lot of talk about tonight in proclamations. School districts are now going to find themselves choosing between funding existing school education programs or providing safe schools and mental health services. Now, there were line items in the budget for this, but it's nowhere near what we need. And you guys have heard that in work sessions about the pickle that we're in with our SROs. The biggest increases to the education budget are for specific programs. I mean, I just have a few listed here, but they're all categoricals, which means school districts have little flexibility or discretion to use these funds to meet the other vital needs, including hiring teachers, funding employee healthcare costs, other costs, bus drivers, which we're in a bind for. So when you're out there talking to your politician friends, and if they try to tell you that the increase that we gave public schools was historic, take out, reach into your pocket and take out some pennies and some quarters and ask them, "Do you think Marion County getting approximately $20,000 of base student allocation increase is something to jump up and down for? If you believe that, I've got a serious problem." And I'm asking you to use whatever resources you have with the people that approved this budget to tell them it's not anywhere near what we need to fund our kids. And maybe if the state, one day, valued public education as a paramount duty, then maybe counties like Marion, Manatee, won't have to come every few years and ask the voters to fund what Tallahassee refuses to fund. Thank you.
Ms. Carolyn Torrey?
Hi, my name is Carolyn Torrey. I reside at 1202 Southeast 14th Avenue. My last name, Torrey, T-O-R-R-E-Y. I want to say this is probably the best run meeting that I've seen in years. You guys are really, were acting very, very professional, and it was really a charm to see the positiveness instead of the negativeness that has plagued this school board for years. One of the case studies I want, I've been asked for many, many times as a response as to why my child's grades were being reported back to another principal, and I've never gotten an answer yet. The person is convicted felon. She volunteered at your schools. She was allowed access to the schools, and I want to know two things. I want to know why this principal did not notify administration about the violations, and secondarily, why I was, my child was allowed to be bullied over and over by the principal and by the convicted felon for medical fraud. I have her, I'm going to leave you the material, and I have the deposition. And I want to know where the FERPA training is going for your things. I just asked Mr. Altobello if anybody has had any FERPA training about confidentiality of child's records. And he says he doesn't recall that anybody has any background in that. And can anybody tell me if they understand what FERPA means? Is there any training in it? This is the email that went between the principal and the convicted felon. Subject: Interesting grades, have a laugh. Getting chilly out there? Thought you'd like to be amused that blank is getting a blank on his interim. Teacher said he's not doing his homework. Just sat at the science fair in the Rubik's suit for two days. Oh, well, she hasn't found out yet. The interims are going home today. If you'd like to see smoke over Osceola, when you, make sure you have a pow-wow with the big chief, Big Mac, that's what she called, Principal McCollum. I wish you could be a fly on the wall, boom. Have a great day, Chicken Little. This is Mary Soueia to your principal, who is still in your school system now. Here's a, Soueia obtained a copy of a medical license at the University of Florida. Soueia stated that where there were licenses all over, Soueia had photocopied the license and doctored it with her name. She said she was-
Of course, please.
Sorry?
refrain from using names.
This is out of a state report. This is out of a state investigation report.
Okay. Go ahead.
I will provide you with the document. It was legally obtained through the, through the things, through the public records request. She made up a control number. She submitted a false license to the BMS during 1988. She said that she was going to have the original false license was given to expire. She made up another license, gave the control number with a new expiration date. You can look up, I can even provide you with the federal conviction of this individual whom you allowed to volunteer in your school system. Here's the deposition of your principal. And there were some emails I got from Mrs. Soueia who were forwarded, emails from Mrs. Torrey. And you recall you got the first email? No, I'm not. How many emails did you exchange with Mrs. Soueia about Mrs. Torrey? Oh, I don't know. You frequently correspond with Mrs. Soueia about Mrs. Torrey, did you not? Mrs. Soueia used to use my name frequently in emails. Yes. And you responded to them? Ah, some of them. What were the criteria for responding to them? Hmm, to be honest with you, I don't know. Sometimes it was just a friendly little conversation pieces. Mrs. Soueia had a pet name for you, did she not? Yes, ma'am. Did she not have one more than pet name? Did she? Yes, ma'am. Over the period of time, what time did you correspond with Mrs. Soueia? Honestly, don't remember. Was it before the child came to your school? I don't believe so. Did you correspond with Mrs. Soueia, Mrs. Torrey or her child? I accepted correspondence from Mrs. Torrey. So I'm the person who's not allowed to talk to teachers, but a convicted felon who's another parent is, and this person still works for your school system. I'm going to give you these documents. I'm going to want a response and an investigation, and I'd appreciate if it'd be done by your attorney. And give me a response of how this is compliance with FERPA and how you can guarantee me that our identities of our kids, because this lady has had access to the school computers, how we can be assured that our identities of our children have not been compromised.
Here's a candid, your public records request. Here's the state investigation report, and here's a portion of the deposition.
May I have a motion to adopt revised Board Policy 7.37 bonded personnel? Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Madam Superintendent?
This Board Policy has minor revisions establishing bond amounts for Board Chair and Vice Chair to accurately reflect current practice, along with wording corrections and update of statutory authority laws implemented and State Board of Education role.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised Board Policy? Board members, any discussion?
No.
Call the questions.
All those in favor, please vote aye. Opposed, like sign. At this point in the agenda, a public hearing was scheduled before a hearing officer for any petitions filed regarding the eight courses approved by the Board at the February 13th, 2018, school board meeting. Since no petitions were filed by March 15th, 2018 deadline, there is no need for the public hearing to proceed, and staff may begin the ordering process of the materials for the courses approved by the Board on February 13th, 2018. They have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-13.1 through C-27.1, including modifications to item C-15.2 for school-level staffing plan only. Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by voting aye. Opposed, like sign. This time, I would like to recognize Superintendent Mayor.
I request the Chair declare good cause to discuss staffing for the 2017-2018 summer programs due to the need for hiring of summer staff to begin immediately.
I declare good cause.
I recommend a motion be made to approve the 2017-2018 extended school year summer school program units.
They have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James. Seconded by Ms. King. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. They have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $57,620.55. $2,500 to Pheasant Elementary School from their business partner, Allstate Construction, via the Public Education Foundation. $3,000 to Forest High School from Ocala Jeep Club of Florida. $1,580 to Forest High School from One Blood Inc. Sonar Polisono Deep Bass Xylophone valued at $2,417.55 to Fort McCoy School from DonorsChoose.org. $20,000 to Hillcrest Public School from an anonymous ongoing donation. $2,500 to Marion Technical College from their business partner, Jenkins Accura, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $6,000 to Marion Technical College from Summer Glen Veterans Club. $1,620 to North Marion High School from One Blood Inc. $300 pre-K grade-four student reading books valued at $1,200 to Sunrise Elementary School from the Ladies Golf Association. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from 230 Circle K Stores, Inc. $1,325 to Vanguard High School from the Kiwanis Club of Ocala, Inc. $1,325 to Westport High School from the Kiwanis Club of Ocala, Inc. $2,500 to Westport High School from their business partner, Ocala Regional Medical Center via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. An eighteen-foot enclosed trailer with twenty-nine bicycles of varying sizes and miscellaneous equipment valued at $10,653 to Curriculum and Instruction Department from Florida Safe Routes to School Program Management per a memorandum of understanding and safety standards alignments. May I have a motion?
No.
So moved by Ms. Boynton. Seconded by Ms. King. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by voting aye and opposed, like sign. Motion passed five-zero. Mr. James, I'm going to give you the privilege tonight.
Well, as always, it's always a pleasure to thank somebody for really contributing to our students in terms of a monetary gain. And I'd like to say on behalf of all the students of Marion County, thank you for this, and thank you for continuing to support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, April 5th, 2018, at nine o'clock. The purpose of the work session is to review IEP audit, testing metrics, database staffing, and turnaround of schools, district staffing plan, as well as Board Policy for a Board Are there board concerns? Comments? Ms. King?
I do have a comment, and I have a concern. Last month, Mrs. Helen Houghtaling, our Golden Apple Teacher of the Year, was invited to lead the pledge and give a speech. She arrived that evening with her speech in her hand, only to be told by the chain of command that she could only lead the pledge but could not give her speech, where she was going to publicly ask that the required QSMA testing be postponed until after the FSAs. She wanted to tell us that her third-grade students had already tested up to twenty hours in county-mandated test, and that her students were getting discouraged. She wanted to implore us to consider the harm in the quantity and the difficulty of the county-created test. Board members, I am concerned. I am concerned that our Teacher of the Year was silenced that night, when the people that work for us and for our students, the very people that are boots-on-the-ground and implement our policies, and- and we prevented her, sorry, I lost my place. Boots on the ground and implemented our policies and we were prevented from hearing them. I am concerned that she was shut down from the administration from publicly speaking that night on behalf of her students and Marion County teachers. But most importantly, why? Why was she shut down? And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, Stacy?
I would like to speak about something that a lot of people contact me in the district. I guess I've been around the county a long, long time in school stuff for 30 years. And people, you know, just call me. Oh, they're clear blue, people I don't even know. And they share information with me. And it helps me to do my due diligence to look and see kind of what's going on when they ask me questions. So I was checking, chasing a rabbit down when I was told that the new principals that have come on were not hired per board policy. So I got the board policy and I can forward it. In fact, maybe Mr. Gibbs has already forwarded it. Where there is a criteria to even qualify to even apply for a principal, that you have a school principal certification or a professional certification as school principal or professional school principal for high school. And then school principal, Level Two for elementary. And then certification as a school principal for some of the other levels, adult ed and different things. I've asked some questions about it. And I called and spoke with one staff member. And she said that they, well, what I actually did, my first contact was with, I asked Dr. Hamm for some information on this. And I, no, first I went through Employment Services, which they won't talk to me about anything. So I ended up going to Mr. Hamm. And when people start not talking to me about things, it just gets, lights me up because it makes me wonder why they're not talking to me about it. So I contacted Dr. Hamm and I said, this is a yes or no. Are some of the new principals not really, didn't follow board policy in their hiring? And he said, that's a yes. And he said, but that's a Grantham thing. That's his area. And I know he did say that most districts are allowing them to get that after a year. But that's not what our board policy says. So if that was the plan, they should have come to the board to talk to us about a board policy because it was completely ignored. Our qualifications on our board policy might as well have been just a black piece of paper sitting in there because it wasn't followed. I called the certification department at the DOE and spoke with, I believe her name was Mrs. Hernandez in certification. Wasn't really easy tracking those people down either. They're really busy. But she spoke with me and I asked her, I said, I'm told that one of our administrators said, well, most of the districts just let them work a year. And she said, well, actually, it's what your board policy says. It's not like a most do anything. She said, if your board policy has that requirement, there's a reason they have that requirement because they want their principals. They don't want to take a chance of putting a principal in a school that's not qualified to be in that school. And so that's the reason your board policy was set up that way. She said, so for someone to say, well, most just do it this other way. She said, no, it's up to the school boards. She said, we actually don't require anything excepted ed leadership. And she said, but, and there's even ways to get around that, she said, but we just have some guidelines. And she said, so if your school board has a policy, then that is what is to be followed, not any legislation or anything else. I said, okay, that's the way I understood it also. So if there was going to be a change in the way we hired our principals, we should have come before the board. The district administration should have come before the board, talked to us, got the board policy corrected instead of totally and completely ignoring this board policy, which that's the reason an appointed superintendent is in order. Because when these things are happening with an appointed superintendent, the superintendent gets fired. The board says you're fired when you don't follow board policy. So I would really like to, someone follow this up.
You know, Ms. Nancy? Okay, Ms. Nancy, you know what? I don't know if you saw your email yet. So I sent an email to our superintendent as well every, I sent it to our lawyer. Could you tell them what I was talking about? If you could, for our lawyer?
The guideline?
Yes.
It was a recommendation that the board adopt a policy outlining disciplinary guidelines. It attached to my office, sent it out this afternoon. Attached to it was one from another district that outlines like certain, like if it's your first offense, second offense and progressive disciplinary measures just as a recommendation and guide. So discipline is consistent across the district.
And I was just asking for, thank you. So quicker. So that it would be, I would like to either have the next available work session, you know, or the next time on the board. You know, I think we need to, but I think everybody can look at that information. You know, I want to think of something.
Okay, now where I am, I'm going to go three different places. I know that I asked for a workshop in reference to this. And I think we got it on the agenda for when. Okay, now, board, I asked for a workshop on our hiring practices. And the reason I asked for that is I'm concerned about how people are being hired and things like that. And I want to make sure we're on the same page in terms of what we're doing. Because I know if you just look at and listen to what is occurring here, people are not feeling that they're not being treated fairly. And board, if we have not been enforcing our policy, then it's our fault and we need to go back and find out why. People were hired here and we were not informed. So we want to go back to that. And we want to get that as quickly as possible. And board, I'm going to suggest that we don't hire anybody else until we go have that work session because we can't continue this stuff. Let me just touch something Ms. King said. Guys, I remember distinctly us talking in reference to our Teacher of the Year coming before us. This is what I was expecting to see tonight. This is the next school board meeting. I expected to hear from our Teacher of the Year. I think the board requested that, that we hear from her. And I still think it's appropriate that we hear from her. Because if she's the Teacher of the Year, she's entitled to her time in front of the board. I don't care if she want to talk about picking cotton. She need to be up there and I want to hear what she have to say. I want to see it out of her mouth. Okay, another thing that's bothering me and it's bothering, we had some hearings the other day. And it bothered me that when I looked at the hearing and I thought about what has been occurring and I'm seeing a tendency or, how can I say? Some norms that I'm not happy with. If DCF come in and investigate something, you get suspended and you are placed on administrative leave until the thing is resolved. I know of four cases where DCF was brought into a case. The person was suspended. It was investigated. And then in turn, DCF didn't find anything. The person was put back on. I know of four cases that. I know of two principals, DCF came in and they disappeared. They, when I say disappeared, I know you guys say, why would you ain't be accrued again? They disappeared. They were suspended. They were investigated and they were moved to another assignment. They couldn't go back to the school if they were found innocent because somebody had already replaced them. I know of two incidents, I know of four incident. And somebody going to say, well, you don't want you to call DCF? I don't want people careers messed up because they looked the other way for one minute and they get rolled up and they get suspended. You ask me why I'm concerned about it? When we suspend somebody and then we have an investigation, those are dollars and cents that we're paying twice. Those are dollars and cents that we're paying twice. We're paying principals on assignment twice. And guys, we are sitting here getting ready to do something that all school districts do. They hire staff for the next year. But I'm going to tell you guys, if we don't watch what we're doing with our budget, we're going to be way over. Because if we keep putting all these administrative people in all these little cover holes paying them the same amount of money, you're going to find that we're going to be running in the red in a hurry. And I am concerned about it. Now, this is what I would like to see happen. First of all, we need to have this meeting on personnel and how we doing this. We need to look at how many people that we've had that have been turned into DCF and how many was found, there was nothing there. And how many times they were suspended? Because these dollars and cents add up, folk. And as a board member, I'm sitting here saying, we had some wonderful things that occurred tonight. We saw all kind of wonderful thing. But guys, when we get down to the business, we need to get down to some business when we come in here too and look at what is actually occurring. This is where I am, Beth. And quicker we can get that thing lined up about employees and then we can turn Mr. Lepin all these guys out there to go find us some people. But we want them to come in and give our regular employees the same playing field. This is where I am. Thank you.
I think this is a bad time for me to talk right now because as I listened to Kelly and then I listened to Nancy, you know, I was, and I'm just going to say it because I had a principal, you know, and all of a sudden, you know, something happened while she was not even, she not even working that day. And I thought, we need to have a... Ms. Superintendent, I know that, I know you do the best. You know, you're really, you're doing a good job. You're doing the best that you can. But I would like to, like this letter that I sent you over, I hope it's read it. Because I looked at our, I looked around at some of our teachers, some of our principals. After a while, even our employees, by the time we get to our students, they hear everything that's going on and they're not feeling good. They're not feeling, they don't feel good no more. Everybody, some of the people just, they just, some people just feel, in your face, just makes you feel everything's okay. But I want you to take the time and look and see if we really are our teachers. We just really, are they really, really happy? Are the teachers, are the employees? And some of us too. I want you to look at that. I want you to deep. And if you find that something's really, really bad, send us the email and we will, we will. I wanted to hear it. I want you to be really, really, real, real with that. Because for all these years that I've been up here in this school board, before that, I was out going, going to a school, working, you know, tutoring, whatever. On this side over here, and I know, I can tell you, there's something going wrong. And I want you to take that deep time again, like I said, and send us a letter to say whether or not, if you think everything, if something is wrong, if you think it's not, let us know. If you think it is, let us know. Thank you.
Is that in the email you sent?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm going to turn this conversation around a little bit. And I want to talk about the Charlie Dixon Elementary Music Festival because it was absolutely outstanding. And I can also tell you that the musicality of the students has improved so much over three years from when I was there three years ago. So our referendum dollars are working in our music world. And then I attended on Friday night, the secondary honor choir with our middle school. It was an all-girl choir and they were, their diction, their musicality was incredible as well as the high school honor choir. So it is working and I have seen an improvement musically. Like I had no idea we would see this kind of improvement in three years than we have. The other thing, the art issue, we are addressing that. So I saw concerns on faces. So know that that is, that that is being addressed and hopefully they'll have the material that they will need. So Superintendent?
Thank you. Officer Berry, how are you? It's good to see you. Thanks for hanging in there with us. I told you tonight was going to be a celebration of wonderful things. And it truly is. And so I think that's my response. Great things are happening. And I know great things are happening because I'm out in the schools. So maybe next time you can go with me. Come on, come on, come on. All right, because I'm out there all the time. So Dr. Grantham already has a response ready to go on the art budget. Thank you for approving the textbooks tonight because I think that's going to solve a lot of the reading problems that were mentioned this evening. So thanks so much. Oh, and if you're, I can tell you where those two principals are. They didn't disappear. They're not in Narnia. They have been moved to other schools. And there aren't administrators and cubbyholes either. They are out in the field. So, but we can help you find them too. So I want to share too that we have, oh my gosh, some awesome professional development. Ms. Horn, thank you. So we are moving forward with a great PD session, a book study on this great book called Ditch That Homework. And when will that go out? Yeah. Oh, okay, so tomorrow. So this is going to go out to all of our teachers, a great book study to revitalize and just, I don't know, embrace this book as much as we have downtown. So that will all be out for everybody. And there's going to be not only a stipend, but we're pleased to be able to present that any teacher who completes it, their name will go in a drawing for $150 gift card to go buy books for their classroom. So we're excited about that. The teacher leader cohort application has been sent to teachers. So that is out there as well and please look for that. We have had, on our Alice Protocol training, we've gotten feedback from 3,430 of our employees and we're really pleased about that. And so we have been going through all that. And again, Ms. Horn, the good thing you're in the front row because I can see you're not weary from reading all those. Thank you for taking care of that. And we want to report that 5,910 of our employees have completed the child abuse training. And to just borrow a phrase that was used in a work session, what price does safety cost? And we will continue to use that DCF reporting hotline. Now with that, it's very important to note that, and I think this follows a comment earlier, that as a school district, we hold teachers accountable for their actions and we do the same thing for students. And in the last few months, you've heard us repeatedly explain how students are arrested and they face legal issues when they make threats of violence at schools. Now recently, a female student made allegations against her male teacher at her high school, allegations that could have cost this teacher his career, his job, his family, and maybe he could have went to jail. But thanks to our thorough investigation and with the involvement of DCF, because we did make the DCF call and it was unfounded. We discovered the allegations and statements made by this student were completely unfounded. In fact, they were false. But fortunately, this teacher's career remains intact. And I was so impressed with this man because he remained relentless for his students and his students continued succeeding because of his dedication to them. And as a result, we're moving forward with plans to expel this student for her actions. You cannot make false allegations against a staff member, actions that were emotionally based to get revenge and jeopardize a teacher's career. So it's interesting that we had planned for me to share this this evening because again, it goes back to if... it goes back to if, if we are gonna investigate every DCF call and unfounded ones are simply unfounded and we will take, um, we will take action if it is a student who does it. And the law will take care of adults who do it because it clearly states in the statute that malicious calls will be dealt with. And so, the law will take care of that. We, my administration, my people, will take care of the children because that's our agenda. We have no other agenda than our children. Today Congressman Yoho visited South Ocala and, um, it, from what, um, Mr. Christian shared, it was a wonderful visit and the students were so engaged in asking questions about the Second Amendment. And he came right back and, and engaged them in conversation. And, uh, according to Mr. Christian, it went to a depth that was surprising. You were very impressed with the students. So, we are also looking forward to, um, Representative Webster visiting Bellevue High. And as we talk about our plans for April 20th and how we have empowered our principals to go and empower their student leaders, what Mr. Kelly is doing at Bellevue High is amazing. Um, and he sent me a timeline of what he has done. And this goes back, um, to the last principal meeting. But his, um, plan will start, um, this week. And he is empowering his students to, um, gather issues that are important to them, to debate them. They're going to film that. Um, then they are going to play that video. Let me bounce back because he gave me so much detail here. So, when the, the, um, the students are debating and they're filming it, Congressman Webster will be visiting the school that day. So, he will be engaged with the students. Now, this is the first week of April. Then, um, following that, they're going to show that video on morning announcements, put up a Survey Monkey, and then the students will pick their top three. Then they're going, um, on April 16th, their A students are going to Washington DC. They're gonna meet Congressman Webster. They're gonna deliver him this video at that time. Then, when they come back, they're on April 20th, the students are going to gather in the gym. Student government is going to lead this, this discussion on that day. And they are going to, um, empower their students to solve the three identified problems that, um, they had done in the beginning of April. Now, they're gonna film that too. And after they edit it, they're going to deliver that final video to Congressman Webster, who said to Mr. Kelly that he would do his very best to get that final video to our president. And all I can say is, I'm so impressed. I can't believe that. And, and again, it's empowering our students to implement a standards-based, um, civics activity, not only on this day, but to extend it. And as to why we've never done this before? Because we've never had 17 students slaughtered in our state before. So, just because we've never done it doesn't mean we can't start and doesn't mean we can't make something fabulous out of a tragedy. And I think that is a tribute, um, to these students and, and to all of us, uh, to create passionate, responsible citizens. Um, Linda Brown, does that name ring a bell to anybody? Linda Brown?
Brown versus Board of Education.
Oh, wait, our, our school lawyer, say it again.
Brown versus Board of Education.
Yes, and did you read it? Brown versus Board of Education. Linda Brown, the Brown in Brown versus Board, passed away on Monday. Um, in 1951, Linda Brown was a nine-year-old girl and all she wanted to do was go to school in Topeka, Kansas. And she was denied that right because at that time, separate but equal was, was establishment. And so, uh, they pursued, um, this to the highest court. As, as I'm sure you can attest, as I was reading through the brief earlier, many of the lower courts dismissed it, but it reached the Supreme Court. And on May 17th, 1954, the Supreme Court ruled unanimously that separating black and white children was unconstitutional. You cannot answer this one. So, this would be final jeopardy. Do you know the, the lawyer that argued Brown to the Supreme Court?
Thurgood Marshall.
Yes, it was. And so, I was so excited. Yes, Thurgood Marshall, um, argued that for the Supreme Court. And, um, so I think that as we celebrate Women's History Month and as we look back at, at, um, just the great things that have happened in our country, that Linda Brown, she deserves to be remembered. And so, Linda Brown, um, we need to say her name again. Um, and then one final thing is that, um, I was texting with Jack, well, last night to this morning. It was about 2:00 AM and we're finishing up our texting. And, and he was asking what was coming up on the board meeting tonight. And, and, and he always likes to talk to me the night before a board meeting, just to see what's happening. And I mentioned to him that, uh, you know, Poetry Month and Lake Weir, which is his alma mater, and they were gonna be here. And, and he said, "So, Mom, what, what book are you gonna share?" Um, and I said, "I don't know." And he goes, "You, seriously, Mom, of all books for this night, you have to, um, know which one to share." And, uh, I said, "Well, no." So, um, there was a dead silence and I thought he had fallen asleep. And so, I, um, I put a couple of question marks. And he goes, "Mom, I just lost everything I had texted. I have to do it again, hold on." So, about 20 minutes later, he texts again. And this is, this was a text. This is what the boy texted me, is two pages of this reflection of a Nikki Giovanni poem. And Nikki Giovanni, he discovered her in high school because the boy did not like poetry until he hit high school and he had Ms. Williams, um, for his teacher. And she introduced him to Nikki Giovanni, who, um, wrote a great poem, beautiful poem, about Tupac Shakur, who is one of Jack's favorite artists. And so, Jack was analyzing the poem, "All Eyes on You." So, there you go, Ms. Boston Ellis, there is it, yes. Um, so, but that, um, he said, "One of the greatest things about, uh, that he admires about Tupac is that he should not have been successful. And even though people may look at him and just look at his rap music, um, he said that it was more likely that he were to have died before he was 13 than to become the voice of his generation." And then he said, "Beyond everything else, he loved his mom." And, um, he wrote a great song about his mom that, um, when Jack and I, oh, gosh, when Jack and I are together, we always play. And, uh, he'll sit there and, and say the lyrics to me. But, um, Tupac was also very philanthropic. And while his peers may have been destroying the neighborhood, he was, he was building libraries, actual libraries in the neighborhood. And so, I got, um, a great lesson from him last night. So, um, it was respectful that, um, tonight's meeting is running late with lots of celebrations of fabulousness. I will just share that Nikki Giovanni's "All Eyes on You", I would encourage you to read that. And then, um, a book that Jack and I like to share together, um, "The Rose That Grew From The Concrete", which is what he read in high school. And it's a collection of those poems. So, thank you so much. Oh, and just to conclude, um, I just want everybody to reflect on what will your verse be? What will your verse be? So, thank you.
Thank you. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through March 2nd, 2018. Mrs. Flotketter, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their children's disciplinary matter?
Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 18-17 with educational services through the entire 2017-18 school year? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor, please signify by saying, voting aye. Opposed, light sign.
It's gone again, okay?
Thank you.
I don't know what she did to it to make it come back on.
They got it to a thing.
I know, but now I'm frustrated.
Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD 18-51, JD 18-52, JD 18-53, JD 18-54, JD 18-55, JD 18-56, JD 18-57E, JD 18-58, JD 18-59, JD 18-60 and JD 18-62E with educational services through the remainder of 2017-18 school year and the first semester